Welcome to the June 3 Eugene Water and Electric Board, Board Meeting. My name's John Brodsky. I'm Board President today. We'll start off our meeting with an agenda check. Look around the room and see if anybody has any additions, factions, or amendments to the agenda. The only thing that I'll mention is on item number. Item numbers. Nine, the billing and collection. We've scheduled 60 minutes for that. With some of the things that have taken place since this agenda went out, I don't think that we'll be using the full 60 minutes on that. We'll still keep it on the agenda, but just for people who might be looking at coordinating their timing as far as what they need to do. I just wanted to put that out there that that agenda item may be a little quicker than 60 minutes. All right. After that, we'll move on to items from board members and the Assistant General Managers. Start with Tim. Sonia.
I just wanted to thank staff and all those involved in the Upriver meeting. I thought it was very well put together and created much better conversations than other formats we've had in the past. So I just wanted to appreciate that. Thanks for all.
Great. Krista Brown. And I don't have anything else. Just kind of talking to what Sonia just said. We will have an opportunity later in the meeting to just kind of do a brief discussion of how that went. So I'll save my comments for that time, but I also concur. All right. Next is correspondence. Questions and comments on the correspondence that were attached in our agenda item that would be the legislative updates. Reserves. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I have a couple that I'd like to put out there in regards to the reserves. There was a couple of things that jumped out at me that I just wanted clarification on. The first one was there was a placeholder for the emergency regulatory fund of $5 million. I know that that's not in this agenda item coming up, but I was wondering if you could just kind of speak to that, give us just a little bit of an idea of what you think that might be used for, how it would be used, and how it would be funded.
So we continue to, with respect to funding, we're working it into the long-term financial plan and intend to show you all a gradual increase of that fund. And that would be available for emergent regulatory issues that may come up at some point in the future to help mitigate a single year's impact from an expense resulting from a regulatory issue.
Do you think that that type of a dollar amount or fee would have an impact on rates? Or would it be something that we could gather internally from other reserve funds?
Well, we'll look to build it over time so that it doesn't have a single year's large rate impact.
Okay, great.
And look for opportunities to, if working cash is higher than we expected, other sources as well.
Okay. Then the second question I had was on the transfer from the Water Department from rate stabilization to capital. There was a footnote in there that said that the rate stabilization fund is used to offset some of the debt service ratio. Could you just talk to if that would have an effect on that? And if that's the highest and best use of that, or would it be better to use working capital or another way to get that money without having a, I mean, is it, if that debt ratio has changed, does that increase our costs when we go out to borrow or existing debt that we have?
Slipping through footnote. So the rate stabilization fund, when we transferred money into it, it, we have been modeling it to, we have been modeling spending that for capital to help reduce our borrowing need. In a single year, it does improve our our debt coverage.
Okay. So yeah, I guess the question I would have looking forward, so it says here in rate stabilization fund up above, it says funds have been modified as a future source for capital projects and long-term financial plan and will help reduce further borrowing. That's great. That's what we want. Per policy, the, well, where was it? Anyways, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we're borrowing Peter to pay Paul, and Paul is a long-term debt solution, that we're going to have to go out and borrow something at a higher debt because we've got, we've lowered that money that we're kind of backing that debt with?
We'll, we continue to make sure that we maintain the financial metrics that keep us at this rating.
Great. Okay, that's that. And then the last one was just the idea of using working cash as opposed to reserves. And I think that that's something that we can look at in the future if the working cash keeps being as above our benchmarks as much as it is the highest and best use of working cash, whether that's borrowing down, putting it into rate stabilization or whatever. I just like to have that thing in it. It appears that this will be coming before us next month for an action item. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be based on direction here this evening. It'll come on consent calendar if that works for you all.
Good. All right. Well, that is all that I have on correspondence. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Nothing on legislative affairs? Really? Oh, I was hoping, so you're gonna take care of that. Well, okay, is Jason on the line? Hi, Jason. The only thing that really piqued mine was the flag that you said the cap and trade might be making a comeback. Can you talk to that?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Huzer, the Public Policy and Government Affairs Director at EWEB. For those that don't know me. Yeah, it is one of those things nobody had on their bingo card, as I said in the memo. That's the only metaphor that is fitting here. It's a shocker. It is in part driven by potential tie-in to a state revenue crisis. As you know, carbon pricing does produce revenue through the sale of carbon allowances. The way that that money is recycled, which is a form of reinvestment back to the people it's collected from is very crucial. There's some ways that could be done, though, that could help address the state's deficit or shortfall in funds to pay for wildfire suppression as well as maintaining and modernizing the transportation system. And I can tell you this, I've seen one draft of the cap and trade proposal. It has no real information about what's going to be done with the revenue. So we're very short on details. But we are already starting to get involved with some stakeholders that are being brought into the conversation, folks that have subject matter expertise in the electric sector. As you, some of you may recall, EWEB was very involved as a technical resource in sort of an advisory role for a cap and trade bills in 2019 and 20. And I really don't know what kind of role we can play with about 20, 25 days to go on the clock, but we'll be there to do what we can. We learned a lot that's still pretty applicable from 2019 and 2020. But if I were handicapping this, I would say single-digit percentage chance of passage. But it indicates that certainly it could be back soon. These revenue issues for the state are not going away. I think the other thing that was in the memo, it is not just motivated by revenue. As you all recall, after the second walkout killing the bill, the cap and trade bill in 2020, Governor Brown, then Governor Brown, said, I'll do as much as I can by executive order. There was a executive order 2004 that created a carbon cap-type program with a form of carbon pricing. It's not as market-based or regionally linked as the programs in Washington, California. And in year one of compliance this year, I've heard some numbers quoted for compliance around $137 a ton. It costs $50 to purchase a carbon allowance in California. I think the price in Washington is a little higher, but when those programs link, that price will be lower. So regulated industries under the Climate Protection Program, the Executive Order Command and Control Program, they're very interested in transitioning away from that command and control program to something that's more market-based, economy-wide, and regionally linked. Because it would have much more efficient and affordable compliance instruments for their industries. So that's what I can tell you now. Again, low chance, but I think we're going to be talking about this again real soon. If not a special session, this could be a dress rehearsal for 2026.
So I guess one of my questions would be with you being in the building representing EWEB, would our position on the 2020 bill? I mean, if we reaffirm that, would that help you or hurt you? Or do you think it's not appropriate if it's time?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think it would be, I don't think it's ripe for a thumbs up, thumbs down. There's not enough meat on the bone to sort of give a scorecard against the carbon management principles that we adopted in 2019, which are still incredibly up-to-date. You know, we have a few principles on things like the point of regulation and being as far upstream as possible, measuring carbon as resource-specific as possible, and also imposing a carbon price as close to real-time, like short-term wholesale market transactions. Those are all really pretty fundamental design elements we would want to see. And there's not enough meat on the bone right now to really score what I've been seeing so far. So it's kind of a, stay tuned. And I'll certainly be the first to pass on information when we could judge this bill more appropriately on how it measures up against our principles and what we kind of know from experience are really important elements of an effective but also affordable program, or should say the most efficient, least-cost approach to carbon mitigation.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. I appreciate that. With that, I don't have any other questions on correspondence. And we will move on to our next item, which is public input. All right. So everybody who's in the room who wants to get public input, you can see some of our things up here as far as what we do. I'm going to just read a couple of things. Although this is a forum, not to, not used as an open back-and-forth dialogue, commissioners and staff value hearing from diverse perspectives and receiving community input. Speakers are asked to keep their testimonies relevant to EWEB business and request that everyone share their comments in a productive and respectful manner. Should a speaker or audience member become disruptive, they may be muted and/or asked to leave. The, you get three minutes to talk when you're there. Do we have anybody on the phone today? No, okay, so I'll go past that. And then with that, I will gavel in the public testimony part. It looks like we have eight people signed up this evening, as of right now. The first is Mark Hudson, followed by Jennifer Lippert. If you just want to come up and talk there, there's a clock that'll start once you begin your testimony.
Smart meters present two distinct risks, health and safety and cybersecurity risks. The health risks in smart meters research raises concerns regarding the risk they pose to the general population and especially children. Over 250 scientists have signed a letter expressing their concerns regarding smart meters. On May 31, 2011, the World Health Organization's Research on Cancer Department issued a decision that non-ionizing radiation, radiation frequencies classified as Level 2B possible carcinogen. And this classification still remains in effect as of today. It is disingenuous for EWEB to publish non-transmitting smart meter radiation as opposed to when beaters are transmitting. Transmit radiation can be significant, and then therefore this type of information would be much more valuable to concerned EWEB customers than what is currently published currently by EWEB. Secondly, smart meters pose a well-documented cybersecurity risk to the grid and reliable power delivery to customers as evidenced by a 2023 study conducted by Oregon State University, in addition to other independent studies that have come to the same conclusion as the OSU report. EWEB reports that they have conducted third-party cybersecurity tests. However, they do not provide documentation as to whom did the test, the methodology, or rigor that is used during those tests. When smart meters were first introduced by EWEB, it was made clear that customers could opt out. To my recollection, it was never announced that opting, that opting in would become mandatory. However, EWEB has, through financial coercion, is making opting in mandatory by imposing a significant fee on those customers who wish to opt out. At best, this is bad customer service, and worse is duplicitous behavior on EWEB's part. Customers' valid concerns regarding smart meter safety should be allowed for them to opt out at no additional cost as other utilities have done. I respectfully request that the board allow customers to opt out at no charge. As a customer, I did engage EWEB's upper management in an attempt to get some of my concerns surrounding smart meters addressed. However, after four back-and-forth emails trying to get these concerns addressed, I received the following reply from EWEB's last email that stated, and I quote, "We do not intend to engage further in, on this topic by email. You are, of course, welcome to share any further comments through public testimony at future board meetings," end of quote. I would appreciate the board's commenting on EWEB's upper management's apparent decision to outsource customer service issues and concerns to the board, and if this is consistent with how you want customers to express valid concerns regarding EWEB's operation now and in the future.
Thank you. Jennifer Lippert, followed by Janice Agnes.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lippert. I am here as an observer with the League of Women Voters of Alene County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences policy through education and advocacy. League observers are here to help ensure that citizens are aware of how decisions that impact our community are being made and to promote government. We thank you for your willingness to serve. We are all here to promote and ensure a healthy democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Agnes or Aggers? Janet?
Janet Ayers.
Oh, Ayers, I'm sorry. The R looked like a D. I apologize. Okay.
Am I next?
Yes, you are. And then Sherry Bordman. Bordman.
I am a constituent of Ward Seven. And as such, we're within our board among the lowest SES, social economic status. I'd like to remind the Commissioner for Ward Seven to be mindful of that in her future decisions affecting people of our economic and marginalized section of Eugene. I'm here tonight. I attempted to make my payment. This spring, I've noticed I'm on the budget billing plan. I'm being charged $5. I get my social security check on the 3rd of every month. Promptly, when I know it's deposited, I call first thing EWEB because they are seemingly a monopoly. I have no other utility I can choose. I need, I remind the audience, social security checks are actually a month behind. So in May, I'm actually getting my check for April to add to the worries of making your payments. So in my talk tonight with EWEB trying to issue my payment, I call it in. I was told I was being charged a late charge of $5. I wondered why. She pointed out that my credit union happens to be Selco. They were doing a courtesy by putting the money in, but that stopped this spring. So in other words, I was getting my social security about a week earlier wherein I was able to make my payments with confidence. For some reason, your vendor, who now does the billing, warns me that you're late, you're late, you're late, when in years past I've always prioritized EWEB as my first bill to pay because no one wants their lights turned off. I have medical issues, and the Commissioner for our area needs to be representing and be aware that she is representing the lowest SES here in Eugene. Also, I'd like to ask EWEB not to be the billing agent for woefully cannot follow a budget. City, city council members and the mayor are just pressing taxes along with EWEB's raises in our electric use. Or good God, we're a hydroelectric state, and we're selling electricity down to California, and they can't turn a profit. And still, you're nailing us to the wall with your raises. And it's hard, if I had the money, I'd pay it. I don't have that kind of money. It's quite nerve, and you guys get $37,000 a year?
Thank you. Sherry Bordman, followed by Wilson. I was gonna say Wilson.
Hi. So my name is Sherry Bordeman, and I am the EWEB Educational Grant Coordinator for Bethel School District. And I just want to let you know just how much we appreciate what you do for our future of Eugene, our Bethel students. And this year, our Bethel students have been able to have some enhanced hands-on experiences in science that would not have been available without the EWEB's educational grant program. The program describes, provides experiences beyond our science curriculum to make the learning meaningful and memorable to our students and their future selves. This school year, we offered resources to all 4,800 of our students in Bethel School District, and the resources were available directly to our classrooms where they created valuable experiences at all grade levels. These resources included science kits around water, energy, weather, and climate, discovery labs to ignite a love for science at the primary grades, beginning with our kindergartners, the study of salmon as a keystone species in our watershed, the wind turbines, and other renewable energy resources. Although we are looking for resources for hydropower so that the custodians don't hate us with what we currently have in mind. So they don't like, they don't like the mess of the water. We also are doing electric vehicles. The students are building and modifying them and then competing for the title of the best. And this is coordinated with 4G. Sometimes, our grant is as simple as providing Petri dishes, beakers, a book to read, drill out, or the funding for transportation to a site, and other supplies to make the lessons meaningful. And all of these are done within the priority topics for the educational EWEB grant. Recently, we held our pilot demonstration for the Power Town demonstration. Were guest visitors from EWEB, Lance and Alyssa came and presented safety around power lines to our fourth graders. The students were very engaged, and they could recall all the important information. The thing that they liked the most was that the demonstration used real electricity so they could see with their own eyes the electric arc as parts made contact. As much as they wanted to manipulate the parts themselves, they did understand the safety issue of students doing that part of it. I really look forward to working as a team with our local school districts, the other, the other school districts that are part of the educational grant. And we are creating our future community members with a foundation of learning and as perspective to help preserve our resources and use them wisely. I just wanted to finish with a comment from one of our Bethel teachers. She said that these community educational grants make it possible for my students to have experiential learning opportunities that they would not be able to have otherwise. Students are very concerned about the health of our waterways, our sources of energy, and our planet as a whole. So these lessons are always engaging and rewarding for all involved. These funds provide resources that allow all of my students to participate in the programs. Our classrooms are transformed by the generous community donations. Without them, our science classrooms would not be as vibrant and as impactful as they are.
Great. Thank you. Wilson.
Hello, my name is Wilson Wedder. I'm in Sonia's ward. I've spoken with her before, and she believes that whatever she believes is how she's going to vote, not on her constituents. I'd like to piggyback on Ms. Ayers' testimony a little bit. Everything that EWEB does should benefit the public. Every single thing. We're sitting in a $53 million building right now that you guys built in 2010 that you said you had to build because you had an influx of money you had to spend. Six months later, you raised rates, and you said that you have to raise the rates to offset the cost of this building. This is a 22,000-square-foot building that you guys did not project to have any form of customer service here. It is insane that I come here today and I'm greeted by a security guard who is an employee of EWEB. Why do you guys need a security guard? You've never had a security guard employed with EWEB before. well, on, on the, on the basis of your building and then raising the rates to offset the cost of the building, you're lying and manipulating, manipulating the public. I can't go down to the old EWEB building without a appointment. And that was never the case before 2020. I don't like your guys' new norm. And everything that you guys do should benefit the public, and it is not benefiting the public. I've had multiple conversations also with Rod, who I believe is or was a general manager here. I don't think that when you guys vote, that you should be voting with your personal interests in mind. Because when you're handing out free meters to low-income housing because you feel that that's what we need is low-income housing, when as a builder I have to purchase those myself and then offset that cost to my customers, that's not fair. And going over your guys' price layout on your, online, you have four cents allocated in kickbacks to the City of Eugene included in our bill. What the hell are we paying EWEB, or what are we paying the City of Eugene for? You guys are a public utility. A public utility that was formed because an outside organization was charging too much for water. For some reason, people want to forget that history. You can't find it anywhere. I wonder why. Every time I bring it up, everyone's, oh, no, that's not why EWEB was formed. That's exactly why EWEB was formed. And that's what you guys need to get back to. Serving the public respectfully.
All right. Hello, fabulous EWEB board members. And I was going to say hello to Frank, and he's not here. I'm Tana Shepard, also known as Eco Chick here in Eugene, 4G. I'm in Ward Eight. And I'm here just, I know that as you prepare to vote on funding for the longstanding grants that are generously provided to our school districts by EWEB, I wanted to take a moment to share my gratitude and appreciation for the opportunity to serve in my role and provide grant-funded projects to our students in our, in our school district for the past eight years. Our 4G EWEB education partnership has become even more integral part of our district since the COVID-19 pause. In our creative pivot, our program expertise has helped our district walk the walk with climate action by providing consultation, professional development, and planning opportunities. In my capacity as grant coordinator and teacher for the program, I not only serve all the students in our district at one point or another, 15,500, at least, sometimes up to 16,000. I also serve the teachers with the program. And, and let's see, sorry, I lost my place. That's what happens when I prepare. All right. So either directly or through the materials and videos that I create, I also have the opportunity to support our teachers and staff to create projects and educating them on climate change ramifications in our area. Our program is about people, making lasting connections and many relationships with students and staff that encourage a deep connection to this place, our home, Eugene, Oregon, and the natural resources we have, ways we can adapt and mitigate in the face of climate crisis, and a hands-on approach to solutions. Here are a few testimonial quotes from teachers and students about our program. So longtime participant in the EV Challenge says, "In my opinion, the consistency of the project has been its greatest asset. Being able to rely on the project year after year has allowed me time to modify and refine the project to develop..." Being able to rely on the project year after year has allowed me time to modify and refine the project to develop the best experience for my students. At the beginning of the year, this is the project the students always ask me about and are most excited about. I'm at a point in my career where my current students, our parent, students' parents were former students of mine and they often tell me how much they enjoyed the then solar car project when they were in middle school and they're excited their child gets to participate." A couple from students here about the EV challenge from this year. "I love the hands-on learning and the whole creative challenge in the work. It's not only interesting but enjoyable and engaging." And another gave a five-star rating because it was a fun learning experience for me to be able to work with a couple people on building a functioning car. It felt like a reward after doing the project with all the paper learning we've done all year. And then, and from a couple of our salmon folks, I know I'm gonna run out of time and I am gonna probably take an extra second. Every year, the program gets better and better. It's like a well-oiled machine and the kids really enjoy it. There's so much learning. For many of these students, it's the first time they've ever been on a field trip and that's in third and fourth grade. Everything's very well organized, receiving the salmon and receiving assistance with planning the field trips. That this person is in awe of me actually and all the staff that I, that I hired to work with us and how much work they put into making sure everything goes smoothly. I could go on and on with testimony from our people, but this is definitely one of the most important things that our teachers identify in our district. So thank you very much and I hope you'll consider the funding.
All right. Next is Joshua Horn, followed by our final speaker, Aidan Bassett.
First, I, I want to concur with everything that Mark said about smart meters because he articulated it so well. Last month, we had a bunch of people show up speaking out against the proposed exorbitant fees that you guys are starting to discuss for the, the opt-out, which was supposed to be free. I mean, you guys never really guaranteed, I mean, we, we started with an opt-in program and we were pretty happy with the opt-in type of program from the beginning when we were speaking out about this like over ten years ago. And, and, and now with this charging for the opt-out, it's, you know, it's clear that you guys are, again, like some other folks are saying here today, not paying attention to what we're saying. The public is speaking out against this idea of charging exorbitant fees for the opt-out. And it's clear that there's, there's some agenda here in pushing this forward because otherwise why would you be implementing a meter that lasts like three, four years, five years max? Instead of an analog meter that costs a fraction of the cost and lasts for twenty, thirty years? You know, it doesn't make any logical sense aside from that this is a, this is a money and data tracking agenda. You guys are clearly going to be monetizing our data if you're not already, selling it to vendors or advertising surveillance purposes. I, I've gone over this stuff plenty of times in previous meetings, maybe not with the exact same board that we have here. But, you know, it's like, it's, it's time to listen to what we're saying and, and also to respond to it because you know, after, after last week, we had, or last month, we had, what, like eight people maybe speaking out against this proposed, these proposed tariffs on opting out for smart meters? And, and after, after the meeting was over, when the public, or when, when the public comment ended, it's like the, we were waiting for a response. You could hear a pin drop in the room. It's like crickets. Please respond to us. Tell us what's going on. What is changing because of this public sentiment? That's what we want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Aidan Bassett is our final speaker.
President Brofsky, Vice President Schlossberg, I guess in absentia, and Commissioners. My name is Aidan Bassett and I am a local attorney. I want to begin by thanking you all for your diligent work supervising the work of EWEB's excellent staff and to thank staff for the extensive detailed resources they provide for the Commissioners and the public to stay informed. In advance of this evening's discussion of the Capital Improvement Plan priorities and EWEB's impending choice about its contract with BPA, I wanted to discuss Senate Bill six eighty-eight, which is currently in the Legislature's Joint Committee on Ways and Means. I missed some of the earlier legislative updates, so I hope this is not duplicative. As you likely know, Senate Bill six eighty-eight would direct the PUC to adopt a framework for performance-based regulation of electric utilities by two thousand twenty-seven. Depending on the incentives and penalties the PUC adopts, performance-based regulation could mark a sharp departure from how electric rates are traditionally set, have been traditionally set for Oregon's utilities. Among other priorities in SB six eighty-eight, the Legislature directs the PUC to pursue the public interest by incentivizing improved energy efficiency, reliability and resiliency. It also emphasizes reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reducing costs to ratepayers, developing distributed energy resources and enhancing services for low-income customers. Again, as you know, EWEB already excels at many of these objectives and indeed has been a leader on demand response initiatives and procurement of low emissions power from our hydroelectric dams. As EWEB considers its contract with BPA, however, EWEB has noted it prefers BPA's load-following product to maximize pricing certainty. This choice has its merits and I do not presume, and I do not presume to know better than staff, how best to shield ratepayers from unpredictable pricing. Still, I would urge you to collect as much information from staff as possible on how the prospect of performance-based regulation is influencing which contract EWEB chooses, which, to be clear, it certainly should influence. If passed, Senate Bill six eighty-eight would create a new regulatory landscape that would likely last throughout EWEB's sixteen-year contract with BPA. I hope you will all have thorough conversations with staff about the implications of SB six eighty-eight before the contract decision is made in July. With the remainder of my time, I will note my strong support for EWEB's implementation of its smart meter program. Thank you all.
That concludes our public testimony. Thank you to everybody who came out. I will open up the floor to Commissioners for comments or questions. No comments. Oh, John?
Yeah, I'll make a, thank you, everybody for coming out. Just a couple responses. We're not gonna have back and forth dialogue, but to address a couple of things that were brought up by Ms. Ayers and Wilson. I heard a reference about us getting thirty seven thousand dollars. We don't get paid a penny. This is all volunteer. I've been sitting here for eighteen years. Whatever. And so I'm not gonna debate with you. And then you talked about city, you know, the city's already raised. We have to bill for stormwater. It has nothing to do with EWEB. They just raised those rates eighteen percent. You're gonna see that on bill. We can't do anything about that.
I didn't hear that.
The, the city just raised stormwater fees eighteen percent. And, and that's gonna be on, and that's gonna be an EWEB bill. It has nothing to do with EWEB, but it's coming.
Understood.
And, and, you know, I apologize, but I want to thank you for coming and reminding us about how sensitive a lot of people are to even the smallest fluctuations in our rates. A lot of this we can't control. Wilson commented about the four cents. What's, what's that for? That's SIL. The acronym's compensation of the tax. We have to pay the city six percent of our revenue. We are the largest revenue producer for the city, but we give them a check for one point four, one point six million a month. And they get that into their general fund. So when we raise rates, they, they'll debate with you. Thank you. And so I just wanted to build little points of clarification. And so, yes, it is. We have no choice to do, to do that. And even though the, the ordinance says three percent, we pay six because that happened in the fifties. How that happened, I don't know. We can't reverse it. I've already tried, but there's a certain thing. We do our best to keep rates down. And I know you don't believe that, but we pay the rates too.
I believe you do.
Well, we all try and, and I can say that for the rest of my colleagues here too. They try. We do everything we can to keep rates down. And you're gonna see this. We have two contracts coming up, one for nineteen million and one for twenty-three, twenty-three million dollars. It's a trim trees. And so this is not an inexpensive thing to run. So I appreciate your comments because it reminds us of how sensitive a lot of people are to these, to the big implications. And so thank you for that. And Aidan, thank you for that. And Josh, I can, you can rest assured, we're not selling your data. We already know how much utility, how much water and power you consume. And we don't care how much you consume. I hope you don't consume too much, but as far as selling data and things like that, that's, that's just a misunderstanding on somebody's point, but I can guarantee you that this organization is not selling data. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia.
Well, while John actually covered point by point each of the items I was going to cover, I do want to just make a quick comment. I personally grew up in a house where we didn't have very much money and I lived in a trailer until I was fifteen. And so I'm very, very careful about how I vote because I know firsthand what it's like to live paycheck to paycheck. And I support the people in our district with that mindset every single day. So should make that comment. And then I wanted to thank the others for coming out and talking about education because part of the work that we do here helps inspire kids to stay in school and get out of poverty. And so I fully intend on supporting those programs because it helps make our community better and that's part of why we have a public utility. So thank you for that time.
Mr. Morris.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Brofsky. My colleagues have said what I was gonna say mostly. I wanted to echo the, the conversation that's happened that my time on this commission, every single meeting, we have used the word affordability. We've brought up conversations about how to keep rates down. That's never not part of our conversation. And I think that that's in our values and I think that that's in our organization. And similar to Commissioners Carlson, I also grew up low-income and without funds. And I think that that's a, a shared understanding of exactly how challenging it can be. Ms. Ayers, you brought up an interesting conversation though, I think through your point of the billing date in particular, when it comes to certain other resources that are coming in. And I think that there's some questions that I am going to ask in the future about that. And so learning more about that. I think that, I wanted to take a quick moment and with Sherry and I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tana.
Tana. I wrote Anya, which is, I think, wrong. Yeah. And thank you just for, for your support. And I had an opportunity to, to chat with one of the 4G parents, I'm sorry, but and to speak about their, their kids and how much they like the EV program in particular and how they're really excited about it. So genuinely, thank you for your support and thank you for coming out here to, to express your support. And to, to Aidan, thank you for your advocacy on Senate Bill six eighty-eight in particular. Jason is one of the smartest people I know that's working in the legislative building. And he is consistently peppered with all of my questions about all the bills that we're working on or supporting. So I, I know it's in a joint Ways and Means. It may continue, it may not. It's a weird session. But I know Jason is a hundred percent on top of it and considering that for the rest of our commission. So thank you all for your testimony.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna speak to Aidan. I know that a lot of the, the bills that come through in regards to the energy industry go through the PUC and as a community-owned utility, a lot of times we're not subject to the same regulations, even though we usually are at or higher than the standards that are prescribed by the PUC. So I'm not sure whether or not SB six eighty-eight would, would apply to us, not having read the bill, but like Tim said, our legislative affairs people are keeping good track of that for us. Will let us know if that's information that we need to have going into our deliberations on our, our upcoming decisions regarding the Bonneville Power Administration contract going forward. Thank you all for coming tonight. Anybody else have any comments? Assistant General Manager.
Two quick things. Jason did confirm that leaning into it, but if it's not on, that, that the Senate bill does apply to IOUs.
Okay.
Only. And I just want to make sure Ms. Ayers, Customer Service could reach out to you if we made sure that we have your contact information.
I don't have a problem with that. That music. Thirty minutes on hold. I'd rather have silence. Thank you.
If you could just leave your contact information. Thank you.
And I think it's probably out of the form here. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming out on a beautiful evening. I appreciate it. If I didn't have to be here, I probably wouldn't be here. And I appreciate you guys coming out and sharing your thoughts and input with us. With that, I will close public comments and we will move on to our next item, which is consent, approval of the consent calendars. So we have consent calendar A. Can't remember which one mine's on.
I like pull items two and three.
Looking which one mine is on. Two and three, yes. And I also wanted to pull number three. So I'm going, there's just three items on it, right? So why don't we, why don't we just? I was gonna say, why don't, instead of approving the one and doing it, let's just pull, let's just talk about items two and three and then we can approve the consent calendar as, as a slate. So with that, do you want to start off, John?
Yeah. Item number two. I know I asked a pre-meeting question on it. I got a nice response, but I'm still not satisfied with the answer. Number one, the contract. The original contract was a hundred and forty-five thousand. You're requesting four hundred and forty thousand in this request, but the bids were only a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and eighty-one and a hundred and forty-one. Help me with that math.
It is fifteen years. Hang on.
Right. But this request is for four hundred and forty, but they bid a hundred and forty. So what are we approving?
Susan, if she can show up online here for us while I pull it up.
You can get back to me on this. I mean, if, if this, if it's gonna be time-consuming, I just, I just don't understand the math. There we go.
Hey, this is because it's a ten-year agreement, I think. Let me double check. Sorry, I didn't have that in the top of my head.
It's fifteen.
This one, yeah, it's going longer because this one is attached to our FERC requirements for the wildlife mitigation.
So this is tied to, to Carmen? Lieberg Forest is tied to Carmen?
Correct. It was a few years ago, but since I've been in here, Commissioner Brown, it was tied to that. We have some of our wildlife mitigation and the Cogswell Creek area is tied to the Carmen Smith Wildlife mitigation, yes. And I don't know if Lisa's in the room, if she can help talk about it a little bit.
Hi, I'm here. I can, I can answer that a bit, Commissioner Brown. Our Carmen Smith license requires us to manage three hundred and forty-three acres for wildlife. Most of that requirement we need on the transmission line. But there were, and other EWEB-owned lands up near the Carmen project. We needed to get to that three hundred and forty-three acres. So the settlement of parties and EWEB suggested that we use the Lieberg Forest as essentially off-site mitigation for, for, to meet those terrestrial habitat needs. Off the top of my head, I think, I, I can't remember, but it's somewhere around, you know, a hundred acres or so in the Lieberg Forest are dedicated to meeting that Carmen Smith requirement, so much so that those portions of the forest have actually been included in the FERC license, the first boundary, project boundary for our Carmen Smith license. There might be other options in the future and we went into that agreement prior to Lieber being offline for game safety issues. So there are probably ultimately other ways we can meet that requirement, but there's a process involved in that. It would require a license amendment through FERC in addition to collaboration and approval from the settlement parties for the wildlife management pan, plan.
Okay. Well, my, my point is, is that, you know, we, we hear about costs and this is in the grander scheme of things, not a lot, but it's a thousand acres that we're managing adjacent to a canal that we're not running that, and, and we're paying somebody to go up there and look at it basically and not do much else that I can see. And I'm just wondering the cost-effectiveness of us continuing. And I'm just wondering, the cost effectiveness of us continuing is, because it just doesn't seem to me to be prudent use of the resource to sell it.
Commissioner, could I respond to that piece as well? So another benefit to the Lieberg Forest, it is up slope of the Lieber Canal. Yes, the canal is out of service and dewatered, but we have concerns about slope stability issues. We do have some landslides up slope of the Lieber Canal, and it's really prudent for us to be managing that lands to be as responsibly as we can until we get through the decommissioning process of Lieber and, and surrender that part of our license. So there's an additional component there of needing to protect the upslope. So we don't have a landslide that might enter the canal and cause some, some dam safety or other issues. Ultimately, my personal preference is we hang on to that property so that we have the ability to manage it responsibly until such time as Lieber is decommissioned. After Lieber's decommissioned, and we have, you know, all of those protections put into place, that might be the time to, to look into other options for the, for the parcel. And then in addition to that, I would say that from Susan's perspective, and she can certainly chime in on this, it does also provide some benefit from a source water protection perspective.
I'm not going to win this argument. So thank you very much. So I'll, I'll, I'll move on on this, but I'm going to keep an eye on it because I just don't think it's good for us to have a thousand acres of prime timberland that it is a, you know, we can monetize it. And if it doesn't really perform, I mean, because we, we contract with people to, to manage harvests. And so, you know, we can sell it with contingencies on it, but use the money for a better purpose, I think. So I'll, if you want a motion to move to item number two, or you want to go to number three?
Yeah, I'll go to number three. I, I was gonna pull number three. So number three is the contract for our tree trimming. And I just had a couple of questions regarding the, the proposed vendor that we're, we're picking. We're, we're going with the West Lane Tree Service. Right now, we have a contract, my understanding is we have a contract with them for three crews upriver. This would be expanding them to do the whole system wide, which would be adding nine more crews. And I was just concerned, you know, I went on and I looked at their website, and I was like, well, one, they didn't have a website, they had a Facebook page. And then the second one, are they, I'm, I'm wondering why they got chosen number one over Davies, which is the one that we have a contract with now that was cheaper and has all the equipment. I mean, are these people really going to be able to stand up nine more crews? In the, in the coming year, I just, I, I'm kind of want to have some answers how they rose to be number one ahead of the contractor that we're dealing with right now, that was actually a lower priced bid.
Stand up the crews that they need. I don't have the details on where the proof is of that, but I'm going to turn it over to Tyler. He may know more, and certainly he or Quentin will know more about your question on how did they score higher?
Well, and, and the, the other question that I would ask is, I mean, in the past, we, we switched from Wright's to, to Davies because there was, there were performance issues that we felt with Wright's. And I'm just wondering, are we, is Davies, are we having performance issues with Davies that made them drop down lower on the scoring or whatever? It just, it just didn't pass my smell test here.
Sure answer to that one is yes, some of the scoring related performance with Davies was part of that one. On the procurement of the people needed to do the labor, it's pretty common for the tree crews whoever gets the contract, basically they open up shop, and people suck over that contractor on the contract, experienced the same thing between Davies and Wright last time. So I believe they're up out there right now, getting ready to launch on this contract. So it's a bit nomadic, as I'd say. The folks that want to stay in this area will go to who wins those contracts for the.
I'm less interested, less worried about the, the, the people as, as opposed to the capital equipment. Standing up nine more crews of bucket trucks and those types of things.
We can check on that part of it, but as I understand, they're ready to rock once the contract is ready.
Okay. John?
Yeah. And just a declaration, I manage a property where Davie rents, if they store all their equipment. I'm very familiar with that, please, but I have no present or future contemplated interest in the outcome of whatever this contract is, just for the record. But I, I too, and wondered, or was apparently their performance, it's a quarter of a million dollars difference. Davie was a quarter of a million dollars less than West Lane. And I like local, but I also like a quarter of a million bucks. And so I'm wondering, was there, how do you measure a quarter of a million dollars of poor performance? Because Davie has state of the art equipment, state of the art trees, or crews, things such as that. Because I, I know what they have. It's all brand new. I just wondering, it was, is that just a subjective judgment? Because we're, we're paying $250,000 more for this contract than we would of Davie that's already in and established. And wondering how that equates into your decision making process. I can speak to the process a bit, and Quentin can pitch in too, but essentially, it's a scoring based system. We get a committee of experts in the utility to score on these different factors. The scores shake out what they do, and that's, that's what orders it. There is some parts that harden fast on the qualifications, the pricing, that part, and I think it's 25% of the overall score is pricing in this one. It's pretty consistent scoring methodology with all the contracts we do that are RFP. So I would say this one bubbles to the top, considering all those factors, like a triple bottom line, not just taking into account costs. So now what point equals what money? I probably can't speak to that. That, that's how we shake out the, the winners.
And this contract starts July 1st.
Yeah.
Right. And so if they don't have the equipment, they're going to get the equipment the next 30 days.
Yeah, or they would default on the contract.
So I could, I could add a little bit to that, too, John. So regarding the price, the price that you're seeing right there, that is a price based on 25 different criteria of a bid table. And this might not necessarily be the actual price that's going to be per year. You'll notice if you actually had those prices up, we'd be, we'd be asking for 29 million instead of 23 million, if that was the case. Our staff took best estimates of like, they're going to use this piece of equipment for approximately this many hours. And came up with a table that tried to compare apples to apples. But they also know that they have experienced managing Davie and West Lane as well. And there's some efficiencies that they think they will gain. So the pricing will actually be cheaper in the long run in some areas.
No, I'm sorry, I was done, but no, I'm not done. Because you just scared me to death, because I'm, I'm being asked to approve a $23 million contract, but you're telling me that it's really not 23, it's 29. But the numbers that I'm seeing aren't real. Help me. I like to keep it really simple, but I'm understanding that's a hell of a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can understand the confusion there. That, that, that is definitely, maybe I didn't say it correctly. So we have a price schedule that is going to list out all the separate pieces of equipment. And I'll just look at one right now, real quick to take a look here. So say we have the supervisor, crew leader, journey level trimmer, apprentice trimmer, we estimate that, that we're going to be using them for approximately 2,000 hours over a certain period based on historical usage of past contracts. And we have equipment, we guess we're going to be using those that equipment at like 1,000 hours for a trailer. There's medium saws at 2,000 hours. Each one of those line items has a separate price that they're using to compare apples to apples. What would this cost? If all vendors being equivalent are going to do this work exactly the same with those pieces of equipment at these rates? And that is what that price that you see in the proposals and bids received, that is that total price that's there. So for the three crew price for West Lane, that is 1.836 million dollars. Now, we have that pricing. We have that experience with West Lane. We know what their previous, what their current pricing is, and what they're bidding at this rate right now. We know how much we've been using them. So using the calculations that we have with our historical data and our current experience with them, we are able to tabulate that the pricing over the next five years with escalation should be approximately 23 million dollars, not 29.
I'd also add a little historical context, looking back at previous contracts like this. Last one we did was in 2020. Now, granted, that was before. So it was April 2020, and this last one was approved. That was 20 million dollars. It was two different contractors, but it was the exact same methodology used for all facets. You know, there was tweaks in the contract based on our lessons learned for performance factors, but the judging and all that kind of thing was similar. It was about a 15% increase from five years ago, which feels fair, I would say, honestly.
Okay.
You want to move on?
I'm just trying to think if I have any more questions. I guess the only other question that I would have was, in the past, we split it between two contractors. Is that an advantage or a disadvantage? I know that in my business, if I've only got one procured vendor, that can, can be problematic, but it can also be advantageous. And I'm just wondering, in this case, is having one, obviously, we feel that having one vendor is advantageous as opposed to having two. Is that kind of where the committee landed?
There's trade offs, but in fact, the scores shake out with the scores. We don't necessarily say we want to or we want different. We have had times when the contract is shook out to be all right, tree services, they did that for multiple contracts in a row, then we started diverging. The trade offs are really, Quentin mentioned it, mobilization. You know, you can, you can be a little more fluid with your decision making if you're the folks directing the work. There's also just the partnership part, you know, if you have a bigger project or some pinch points, you can't put two different contractors together willy nilly. But like you said, the all, all your eggs in one basket is another thing to think about as a trade off. But we have had it both ways. And it's just, that's why we have foresters on staff that manage those crews every day to, to keep tabs on that. So we would know if there's an issue, rightfully not be surprised.
Great. Well, well, thank you. Thank you for the information. I asked the question just because it, it kind of jumped out at me. I also agree, I like the idea of a local company as opposed to a California based company. I just had concerns about it, and I wanted to voice those concerns so that I can make a an informed vote on, on behalf of my constituents. So with that, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to adopt consent calendar A.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we have consent calendar B.
Move to adopt consent calendar B.
All right. We're pulling number six. So let's move to approve the consent calendar B minus item six. All in favor?
I'm.
I'm opposed. All right. And Sonia, you wanted to speak to item six?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the timing of the fees that were proposed. It looked like, sorry, get on the mic here. I want to talk a little bit about the timing of the fees that were proposed. It looked in there like they were going to go into effect two days ago. I think it's been updated, so it's now July 1st. Is that correct?
We did update that to reflect that they would be effective July 1st.
Okay. I put a little bit of a pause there because it seems like in some of these major projects, you know, if somebody gets a quote, then it might take a little bit more than a month to get the word out about that price increase. And I, I will make a comment that I have a personal project that I literally got a quote on for two weeks ago. And, you know, I, I try to interact with EWEB when I'm a citizen as a citizen, so that I get the same level of service or, you know, foibles or whatever, so that I can talk to that. But it looks like many of these fees are going to go up in a very short timeframe that we can't communicate that out to the public. And many of the projects are already kind of underway. So I just have a little bit of concern for that for the general public and how quickly these go in. You know, typically when we have rate increases, on the other side, we vote in, you know, early December, there's a couple of months for our rates to be discussed in November and December. And then they don't go into effect until February. And so there's plenty of time to, you know, to actually get the word out about what those changes are. And it seems like, I know this affects a smaller portion of the public, but it still affects a pretty critical part of our public in terms of our infrastructure. And I know that we're already seen as a, a challenging community to operate in, in terms of our development and other things. And this, I don't know, this seems like it's another kind of nail in the coffin. But I'd like to hear other commissioners thoughts on it. It's only my first interaction with it. So maybe others have had different experiences.
Deborah, do you want to speak to that? Or?
I was, I was going to let anyone else chime in since she did ask for commissioners.
I'd say anybody else.
I don't have any interaction with it at all. You know, if it affects me, it affects me. You know, I don't, sorry, I don't pay attention to that when, because I'm downtown. And if I'm on the fiber or whatever, I've got to get, there's nothing to do about.
Well, some of the fees are related to building and other, you know, forms of, so it's not just the fiber, right? I mean, there's, there's system development and there's other fees that are increasing that are fairly significant.
The system development fees are not included in this packet, and they have, they do have a process by statute that they follow.
Well, let me get down to the other fee here. So there's transmission service, there's, sorry, maybe it's not the SDC fees, but there's a number of other fees. So the water service charges and pricing, and those impact residents and other developers, correct?
They, I mean, maybe. So historically, we have, we have implemented fees in the month following board approval. It's certainly something that we could consider to do differently. These are fees that go throughout the utility and they, those individual work units have their own processes for how they manage that. It hasn't typically been subject to a widespread communication, as most of these are as, as needed.
I'm just curious. I know, I, I mean, if others must support it, that's totally fine. I've already declared my conflict of interest, so I'm going to abstain from voting on it. But it just kind of struck me because there are like fairly significant changes, it appears to me, and I, I could be reading it incorrectly, but thousands of dollars that are going to impact people that are trying to build very much needed housing in this community in, you know, not in, in a short amount of time. And it just seems wrong to hinder those projects without having, you know, some additional support and communication around it. Anyways, that's it.
So I believe the fees that you're referring to are ones that we actually discussed at, at some length last year and phased in. And these are consistent with what we proposed last year as a phase in approach.
So when staff are communicating these changes to customers, do they tell them the new rate or the old rate? I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there. It's something that we should consider as we think about making our utility more customer friendly. Okay.
Yeah. And, and that might be something we could look forward to in the future that possibly we say, you know, this is a scheduled thing that happens on a, on a regular basis. It's happened a couple of times since I've been on the board. Maybe we say, try and put this agenda item up further in, in the spring and say, you know, we raise our rates on July 1st every year. Or if there is going to be a rate increase, it, it takes effect on July 1st. And then, then that is known to a developer that, hey, if you can get it in before then, kind of like at the city, if you can get your building permit before they raise the fees, you're, you're good. That may be an option going forward that might alleviate Commissioner Carlson's concern. So maybe we can look forward to that in the future as a, an idea.
Consolidating the fees to once a year was our first step there. And so certainly welcome ideas on how we can improve transparency on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, would, I would entertain a motion to approve item six from consent calendar B.
So moved.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstaining. Commissioner Carlson abstaining. Motion passes three, two. A half. How you, how you put that out there? Okay. Next item is prior years. Okay. Uh, next item is prior years audits. I, excellent item number eight. Favorite agenda item of the whole year.
Before I hand over this presentation to our partners at Moss Adams, I did want to make sure that I acknowledged, and maybe I should say who I am, for the record, Deborah Hart, Assistant General Manager and CFO, and with me is Rob Freitag, our General Accounting Supervisor. We also have, uh, a Fiscal Services Supervisor, Erin, and, uh, Tia, the Finance Manager available for questions after. But before I hand it over to our Moss Adams partners, I did just really want to acknowledge the hard work of the accounting team this year and a, a clean audit opinion is an accomplishment in any year. But this year they did that with 11 months in, um, in SmartStream and one month in SAP and navigating a new system. And, uh, so I just really want to acknowledge their work and appreciate them. And with that, I think we have Keith and Iday. Oh, Keith, we can't hear you. We still cannot hear you. It's going to be a shortage.
There we go. Very good. We did not have the ability to unmute, but, uh, we are, we are good now. So hopefully you can all hear us okay. Uh, thank you for the introduction, Deborah, and thank you commissioners for having us here this evening. Uh, yes, this was a, a, a little bit later in the, uh, year than we're typically before you, kind of giving this presentation to wrap up the, the audit process and give you those final results. Of course, as you heard with the conversion from, from SmartStream over to SAP and all the work that went into that and closing out the books under the new system, a tremendous amount of work that had to be done, uh, to be audit ready, uh, like E web typically is in the past. So a few months, uh, later that we're here than, than typically, but the audit is complete at this point. All of our audit reports, we've, we've signed, uh, all of those audit opinions and are here to present those final results and answer any questions that, that you might all have as well. Uh, so with that, we can go ahead and advance the slide. And just a quick run through of our agenda, we're going to give you a quick recap of kind of the, the core group of our audit team. Go through a summary of the different services that we provide as part of this process each and every year. When you hire us to come in and, and do an independent audit, what does that mean? What are the deliverables that, uh, we have to produce? And what do each one of those mean? Uh, Iday Alvarado, who's our audit manager on here with me, uh, is going to go through the significant audit areas or really where we spent the bulk of our, of our time and some of the new items that we had to take a look at this year. Uh, then we'll go through what our actual audit opinions and reports, uh, say and the highlights from those and some additional required communications before we close things out. Go ahead and advance the slide. Uh, this is, uh, kind of just a quick snapshot of the core group of our team. We had, uh, many more staff and seniors that are involved as we're onsite working, uh, kind of face to face with your E web finance staff and others throughout the organization to conduct the annual audit each and every year. But this is kind of the core group of our, of our team, kind of the, the managerial level folks. Uh, in addition to myself, we had Laurel Bruschaco, who served as our, uh, what we call our concurrent reviewers, really a QC review role that we require on every audit that we do, that we have an additional person that's not otherwise involved with your, uh, staff or, or there onsite with the rest of our team. They're coming in, making sure, are we following our professional standards? Do our final deliverables include all the items that they should include? Do we do our risk assessment appropriately? Do we follow through on the items that we said we were going to do during the planning phase? That's really the goal there. Uh, and that person has to sign off on everything before we can issue our, our final reports. Uh, Iday Alvarado, as I mentioned, was our audit manager again this year. She's been on the audit for a few years now. And then JD Minkins, who served as our in charge senior auditor, leading kind of the rest of our seniors and staff that were, uh, working through the audit onsite. Go and advance the slide. I know there's a lot of words on this page. I'm going to just summarize this for you, but this is again, a, a snapshot of the different reports that we, that we provide and the services that we provide as part of this process. This can differ a little bit from year to year, just depending on, um, uh, if you have a year in which you are expending a significant amount of, uh, federal funding, which when I say significant, uh, the, the threshold there at a federal level is $750,000. If you're spending more than $750,000 of federal funds in a given year, that triggers an additional compliance audit over the use of those funds, how you spent those funds, was it in line with the underlying grant agreements, uh, from the federal agency, right? So there's a few additional reports that we issue in those types of years, which this was one of those. Uh, so you see a few more boxes on here maybe than you've seen in, in other years, if you've, uh, sat, sat through some of these presentations in the past. Uh, boxes one and two are really one deliverable. It's our, our main auditor report over the fairness and accuracy of the, uh, your annual financial statements. So for this time being December 31st, 2024. Um, and to get to that point where we can issue that report, it, it involves a lot of detailed testing, uh, where we're tracing back to contracts, agreements, invoices, uh, cash receipts and disbursements, all that kind of underlying substantive evidence to support what's been captured and recorded, uh, in your team's general ledger in SAP and making sure that is all summarized and presented in your financial statements, uh, appropriately. Uh, and then box two, related to that, again, same report, just one deliverable, but, uh, kind of a different, uh, type of service than what I just spoke to. This is really kind of looking at that actual draft financial statement that your finance team puts together, making sure that it includes all of the disclosures that are required under the governmental accounting standards that you're required to follow. And it's presented in kind of the format that the governmental accounting standards requires you to present your financial information in each and every year as well. So kind of doing that technical review of the actual document itself, making sure all the numbers in there are consistent with what we audited and what we saw in your, in your, uh, SAP system as well. Uh, box three has to do with an additional report that we put in there, uh, that's in compliance with government auditing standards, which is just a little bit different from corporate audit standards. And it's really only required in a year when you do have that additional, uh, uh, federal funding, uh, expenses during the year that triggered the additional audit. Uh, and so this is something where, uh, we have to conduct the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which really just has this additional, uh, reporting component where we have this additional audit report where we have to note, did we note any instances of non-compliance with applicable laws and regulations related to, to your financial reporting? As well as did we in, run into what we would call either a material weakness or significant deficiency in internal controls? And you actually have to report that out in this report that gets attached to your audited financial statements as well. Box four is an additional report that's required each and every year for, for E web and for all Oregon municipal corporations. So if you're comparing yourself and, and looking at the audit reports of, uh, of another, uh, public utility, if you're looking even in, uh, just north of us in the state of Washington, you're not going to see a report like that. It's unique to the state of Oregon. Uh, and the state of Oregon requires that the, your independent auditor, as they're going through the annual financial statement audit, they're also doing some compliance audit procedures over certain state statutes. And a lot of the times where we're spending most of our time is where you're parking your funds, are they in, uh, state, uh, or depositories that are approved by the state treasury, uh, where you're investing your funds, are those approved investments under the state statutes? Um, and then your procurement processes, are you following kind of all the, uh, competitive bid and, and informal bid type of procedures that the state statutes require when you go out to procure goods and services? Box five is the additional report for the spending of those federal funds and the compliance of that, right? So that additional testing that we do when we take a look at those different, uh, federal programs, um, that, uh, are providing you with funds and you're spending those funds in the given year and making sure that you're in alignment with, uh, spending those funds in accordance with those underlying grant agreements. And then box six, we'll go through a little bit more of what's in there and the highlights later. Uh, but it's called our communication to those charged with governance and it's a letter to give you a little more information as to how the audit process went. So on top of just, did you get a clean opinion or not? Did you have compliance findings or not? This tells you, well, how did the audit go? Did you run into issues? Did you have audit adjustments? Did you find errors along the way that got corrected in the final document, but did you find errors? So you have recommendations for us going forward that maybe aren't a material weakness or significant deficiency, uh, but are there best practice recommendations and things like that. So a lot more information, uh, that's intended in that letter. And that's something that's required on each and every audit that we do by our professional standards. Uh, go ahead and advance to the next slide. All right. I'm going to pass it along to Iday Alvarado. So you're going to hear from someone else for, for a little bit from our team. She's going to talk through to start with our, uh, significant audit areas.
Thank you, Keith. Can everyone, can you hear me? Okay. I just want to make sure my mic is. Perfect. Awesome. Some of the significant audit areas that arose, again, as part of kind of our preliminary planning procedures, and a lot of these are not necessarily just unique to E web, but kind of across the industry, things that we focused on. First one being the work orders and work order classification specifically. So we do kind of a really, really deep dive on work order classification as of year end and whether or not a work order, you know, is still indeed being worked on and in progress or should actually have been closed prior to year end. So again, in, in area kind of across the industry that we, we spend particularly a long time on, really focusing kind of in the weeds, in the detail on those items. As well as this year, unique to E web, we did see the SAP conversion occur. Um, as noted, the conversion occurred December of 2024. So we were able to kind of do, do some dual testing there when we looked, where we looked at, um, you know, internal controls for 11 out of the 12 months, as well as then those controls in place subsequent to the SAP conversion, really, really documenting, sitting with everybody, just kind of a, a, across the, the board there. Uh, as well as then we were able to leverage our IT team to kind of come in as well and really also perform kind of their individual testing over the SAP conversion, as well as the documentation in place and kind of the testing that occurred prior to even go live. Next up, we had, um, another area, kind of as Keith mentioned, the single audit, uh, testing, especially looking at federal funds received. But then kind of really going into the weeds on those federal funds, as well as looking at the allowable cost incurred and determining if, if those costs that were, were expensed, you know, were indeed determined by the grant agreement in place. Uh, as well as looking at revenue and expenses over power trading. And then this year, there was the adoption of Gatsby 101 compensated absences. Next slide, please. So some of the audit opinions and reports that were issued, and I think Keith kind of really went into the weeds on a lot of these. Um, but for the financial statements, there was an unmodified opinion, which otherwise kind of referred to as a clean opinion. This is exactly what you want to see on the financial statements, as well as then the government auditing standards report noting no findings there as well. Uh, the Oregon Minimum Audit Standard report to that kind of OMS report where, as Keith mentioned, we very unique to the state of Oregon. We also noted no findings there in our testing. Um, and then lastly, we had the single audit report there as well. Like I said, we looked at kind of all the allowable costs, um, looked at those expenses coming in, how those funds were used. And we did, we had no findings in those items as well. Next slide, please. Some of our required communication to the board. So this again was also provided to you in, in the letter, but this is kind of a nice little bullet summary here is, you know, the, the opinion on the financial statements, which again, noting an unmodified opinion, as well as any significant accounting policies for the year, which this year, as I mentioned, Gatsby 101, uh, was a really big undertaking. So the adoption required management to evaluate all compensated absences offered. So this could include sick time or other salary related payments, um, you know, so it's a, if a sabbatical was offered. So what this kind of entailed was a calculation of that liability for that lead that hasn't been used yet or a lead that has been used, but maybe not yet paid out. So you will kind of notice not only a new, uh, again, and the new significant accounting policy mentioned in this letter, but also kind of that new disclosure in the financial statements as well. Uh, we're also required to kind of note any estimate or judgment set, set forth by management, uh, as well as if any audit adjustments or proposed adjustments were identified through our testing procedures. And happy to report that we had none of those this year, uh, as well as any disagreements with management, which again, encountered no disagreements, uh, difficulties performing the audits or any, any delays that were encountered, which, you know, there, there were no delays or there was kind of a push of fieldwork just due to the SAP implementation when compared to years past. But once we had those dates kind of set in place, it was, you know, smooth sailing through, through issuance there. As well as any audit observations and recommendations observed through our internal control processes. So kind of as I mentioned here, this year was really unique in the sense that we were not only looking at internal controls for how they operate 11 out of the 12 months, but also really then focusing on kind of that last month and seeing how, you know, SAP controls were, were operating for that month. But also it was, I, you know, really cool opportunity for us just working directly with management and gaining a better understanding of their new controls in place and kind of their openness and willing to discuss, you know, kind of the processes that they're, they're still kind of outlining and, and we're going through, kind of through the audit as well. Next slide, please. Um, do you want to give a thank you to the E web team? Everyone is always so, so intentional about, you know, wanting to check in with us, making sure that they're staying on top of all of our audit requests, as well as then providing those requests on a really timely basis. You know, we're able to continue to work through the audit efficiently because of, of how quick, uh, responses are. I think also really wanting to highlight the transition to SAP, uh, sounded like everything went incredibly smooth. And that's, you know, not something we're, we're used to hearing a lot of when people go through, when, uh, organizations go through a big ERP implementation. And so I just think it's a, a great testament to kind of the talent that E web has and how well prepared they were for this implementation. But also willing to kind of walk us through the whole entire process for the audit and, and their patience there as well. Don't know if you want to add anything, Keith, but I was going to say back, back to you on the next slide.
No, that's great. And, uh, wanted to take a moment here at the end and close out to, uh, let you know about a significant or some significant news at, at our firm. Uh, of course, uh, and we've shared this with, with some of your team members as well. And maybe some of you have seen this, uh, that didn't hear from us directly, but it's been out in the news as well. Uh, we actually have a significant merger, uh, that just closed today, actually. So I'm still getting used to saying this, but as of today, we are officially Baker Tilly as Moss Adams, um, uh, which we perform this audit under Moss Adams. And that's what we've been performing this audit under, uh, previously, our merger closed today. And now we have merged officially with Baker Tilly, another firm that I think many of you might be familiar with. As I know Baker Tilly has had, uh, some work that they've done, uh, and contracted with E web, uh, in the past for different projects. Um, so very excited about this. I think this is, uh, really going to be exciting and help a lot of our clients, including E web going forward. Uh, and, you know, for, for me and Iday and being involved in our firm's energy industry group that serves power and utilities. And that's where we focus our time. Uh, Baker Tilly is a very industry focused group, uh, and firm as well. And of course, we are very familiar, uh, with some of their folks on, on their energy side, just kind of bumping into them at conferences and things like that in the past. But, uh, now they're, we're all part of the same team, working towards the same goal. And so we have a deeper bench, especially in our energy group as well, uh, and excited to kind of bring that to, to light to a lot of our clients, uh, as we continue to kind of serve the, the same types of clients that we have in the past. We're not looking to change that or anything, uh, but really just kind of expanding what we're doing, have that deeper bench than, than we've got now. And, and having more, much more scale than we have, uh, Baker Tilly is kind of headquartered in Chicago, um, and generally, uh, located in, with offices in the upper Midwest and the East Coast and down in the South, whereas we historically have been West Coast and down into the Southwest and into Texas. And so, uh, this really kind of gives us a combined footprint that is, uh, much more significant than what we had in the past, um, and makes us really a, a national firm, uh, with much more reach. Uh, so we can pull from experiences and, um, expertise that we've gotten with individuals and that have clients on other parts of the country than what we've served traditionally. And I think that's going to be really exciting, uh, going forward. So we just want to make sure that was, uh, discussed a little bit and, uh, we can open it up for, for any questions on this or anything related to, to your audit. I wanted to make sure we went through, through that as well, because it was a significant change, uh, with our firm as of today.
All right. That's it. I will open the floor for questions or comments. Commissioner Brown.
Well, thank you again for doing this. I know that we've commented on this before and, and we've pared it down from an hour and a half to 30 minutes. I appreciate that. Just two clarifying questions. Um, what's gas? What's steam? And, and the resource, you said power resource attributes, you have hydro, wind, biomass and steam. Is that gas? It's page eight.
It's a 84,000 megawatt hours last year. What is steam?
This source.
Like it's got to be a legacy name from back when we had a steam plant.
Well, you're carrying it for all three years, 22, 23 and 24.
Well, you're carrying it for all three years, 22, 23 and 24.
That's the uh, category we use for the international paper generation.
That wouldn't be biomass? Because biomass is the next line.
Biomass is the second category. I just wondered, but is that gas turbines or? Because it's not in our portfolio. I just wondered what it's a pretty significant resource that you have listed there.
The IP generator would be steam driven resource that we have in our portfolio.
But it's.
Based on the size of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's huge. It's half the size of biomass.
Yeah, we we own the output of half of the IP generator. We have all of the output of the SPI generator, which must be the biomass.
Must be. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, I'll take a must be. We have, we got beat up a few years ago, but we implemented the WAM program. And, uh, work area management, I think is the acronym, and we spent millions and millions of dollars on that program. And we had problems with it, and it caused problems with the with the oddity and everything else. It didn't, the way we were doing it wasn't correct. What happened to that? Did it just disappear? Did it die the death it deserved or what happened?
Not yet.
I mean, I I mean, we spent millions on it. And and it was supposed to be the save all for uh, for inventory and implementation and tracking and things. And it causes audit problems, and I don't see it mentioned here anymore. And so it just disappeared?
WAM did not disappear. It is where, um, it it is still our work asset management program. It is, uh, slated for replacement with an SAP product. And we'll be beginning that work. Well, we're doing some of the pre-work now. So, um, those discussions will continue throughout the year, but we're scheduled to begin that work next year.
Is that something that we have budgeted in the capital?
We we have done in the long term financial plan, and it was part of, um, it's been part of the overall presentations. That Travis Knebe, uh, our CIO has been bringing to the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, well, thank you very much for the presentation and for the thorough report. Always appreciated. And, uh, kudos to staff for the clean audit. I always look for that. It seems like it's become harder and harder to find burying the lead at the. At the end, usually see it at the beginning, but, um, great to see that it was there. Uh, I am curious now in light of the new merger, um, we go out to bid every few years on a contract. When is our contract up, if anybody knows offhand? And if you don't, that's fine. If you can get back to me, um, I'm just curious when we're going to have to go through that process again and, um. Just, you know, given the newness of the the situation here.
We recently extended their contract, so I can't speak with certainty, but it's a couple more years.
I see. That's what I was going to say as well, Deborah, a couple more years.
Okay, thank you. Right, that's it for me.
Okay, um, so I have a couple of questions. First off, on the SAP, uh, is that a platform that you guys have used with other industry? Audits and have you found it to be, uh, helpful? And, uh, do you, do you think it'll make the audit easier, better? As you know, as it's been represented to us as being this great new tool. I'm just wondering how you guys have interacted with it with other clients.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. No, we are, we are very familiar with it. We definitely have, uh, clients that that use SAP. In in a number of different industries, but definitely within this power and utilities industry as well. So we have number, number of other clients that that have it and use it, so we're very familiar with it. In terms of, does it make the audit easier, better? Um, you know, always always tough when you go through a conversion. You've got more, uh, systems and modules that are are coming online and SAP, as you just heard there with with the comments on on WAM. Uh, so there's, there's more to come there that will impact the audit kind of during this conversion period. But I think in the long run, it makes things a little bit, uh, more straightforward for the audit. Because we just have one system that we're looking at, right? Whereas in the past, you've had different systems for all these different areas that feed into your financial system, right? So you had SmartStream, but that wasn't the only system that we had to look at and understand the controls and who has access, who's given access. And who monitors that and all those things, right? What's the change management processes? We had to look at a number of different systems, right? We had to look at your, on your, on your payroll side. And WAM, of course, is a part of that. We had to look at your customer service and billing system. Power trading with Allegro. I mean, you've got a number of different systems that we had to take a look at. And now that is getting pared down to to fewer and fewer systems that we're having to really test those internal controls on the IT side. And bring in our IT specialists as well to take a look at those. So, uh, I think that does make things a little bit more straightforward going forward. But again, during this, uh, time of conversion, uh, there there's a little more work to do, I would say during the audit.
Great. And then my, another question that I have is on the the extra audits that we incurred, uh, on the federal side this time. Are those costs able to be rolled into the administrative part of the federal grants? Or does that come out of our, I mean, obviously, if you're having to do a whole nother audit to meet these federal standards, that's an incurred cost. Can that be put into the administrative side of the federal grants?
So we did incur the additional cost. We we received large amounts of, uh, well, we have applied for FEMA grants. And so they are pretty significant dollars. I I hear what you're getting at, and we do weigh the costs of that. Different grants have different, uh, overhead applications.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if, you know, if the federal government says you have to incur these cost. You know, it's kind of like from the state, unfunded mandates, right? The federal government says you've got to do this, but they don't give us the fundings to do it. Well, whereas, you know, you can hopefully roll it into the administrative costs of the of the grants and the money that's coming in.
Yeah, where we're unable to, it does come out of our general funding.
Okay, and then, uh, again, congratulations to the clean audit. I think that in the four years that I've been here, most of them have been clear. There was one that had a couple of little. You might want to look at this. I think it was a number of, uh, work orders that were past due, and that was, I think, in my first year that I was here. But it was.
You are right, though.
Congratulations. And I believe that I had, as as board president, I had an opportunity to interact with the audit team to answer some questions. They called me up one time and we did a Zoom meeting and they said, how are you guys doing? And I said, oh, they're doing fabulous. And so I I, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to interact and get get your take as far as the governance, uh, and staff relationship going forward. I think that's an important part as well to to keep that in the in the link, uh, as far as going forward. I think it was helpful to them, I hope, and it was it was helpful to me to know that they were interested in the board's perspective as to the inner workings between the governance and and the staff. So I appreciate that. And with that, congratulations on a clean audit. I don't know, is this an action item or? Any other questions or comments? Congratulations on the merger. I heard that there's like a 25% bonus to all, uh, employees, so that's great for you. I I hope you spend it wisely.
They're going to cut their audit fees by 40%.
That's right. That's right.
So a lot of rumors flying around here right now. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate it. All right.
Thank you all.
Okay. My bearings here. So the next item is item number nine, E-Web billing and collection of non utility fees. There is no background around this. Deborah, did you want to speak to it?
The background material for this was sent separately to you all directly from Frank. And, uh, I'm going to turn the floor back over to you to manage some conversation around this. And, uh, potentially, there were, uh, there were some potential motions if you wanted to take action this evening. Or at a later meeting, and then we'll take that as staff direction going forward.
Okay. Well, I will start this out. The, this has to do with a conversation that was brought to us through the city of Eugene. And the possibility of adding a, uh, a city service fee to our bill. We were approached, uh, to look at the the possibility of what that would mean. And if we would be amenable to that, it would be an unprecedented, uh, fee on our bill. Some of the bill, the the things that we are are putting on our bill right now for the city of Eugene are, uh, codified in our our working relationship with the city of Eugene. This would be outside of what is codified. And so last month, we didn't know where this was going to land. The city of Eugene since then has come up with a, an option that will increase their stormwater fees that are put on our bill that we have no control over. We are mandated to put those on there. And as of right now, there is, uh, still a possibility that they may ask us to put it on there. But I I, from my feeling is that possibility is is fairly remote at this point. We have had some information from our our staff as to what the, um, implications would be. If we had this put on our, if we were to put this on our bill. So at this point, there are a couple of three different motions that are possible for us to put forward. And I'm just going to put it open for discussion. Basically, the discussion that isn't tied to a specific fee or, uh, proposal at this time, it would just be, is this body willing to put something on our bill that isn't a mandated E-Web fee? So Sony.
I'd like to move that we tabled this until date uncertain, since there's nothing pressing and a future board could just change it.
I'm totally against taking a can down the road. I've talked to two city councilors. They want to know sooner than later. Councilor Yeh said in public session, I wish E-Web would have told us, because they, and we've done all the background work. We've got everything done, and 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 for me, it's 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 a no brainer. I I am totally against putting a non E-Web fee on the E-Web bill. And I'll quote what's what Mindy said, overall, I don't support putting an unrelated fee on our bill. I feel it adds too much complexity to our system and may negatively impact customers. She goes on and on. I read this thing that Frank said, that timing use pilots could be delayed or postponed. Our scheduling, um, delayed or postponed. Customer prepaid home delayed or postponed. I mean, this thing, why? We're going to get the heat already, because E-Web, the E-Web bill is going up and it's going to continue to go up. And I don't see where this would ever be appropriate. And why would we kick this can down the road? We've done all the background work. The council, at least the people I've spoken to, the councilors, they want to know. And I can't ever conceive or comprehend B or, you know, others maybe of putting this on the bill. You heard tonight how tough these bills are. And even if we put it on the bill, you, they've already said legally, we cannot turn somebody's utilities off because of them, if they don't pay it. So I'm, I'm not for delaying it. I want to get this over with and move on. I mean, we're already over scheduled for the July meeting, so if not now, then when?
My point is that whether we vote for it or against it, it's not going to move forward most likely. And so, I mean, for me, it's, I I think it's a moot point. And if we're not going to do do it anyway, um, a future board can just change it. So we can say no tonight, and that's fine. I don't think it matters one way or the other. I don't think the council's going to pull it back up. I think the indications that we've given them already moved the needle, and it still moved it in a way that wasn't ideal, because they just jumped up the rate on the stormwater fees, which is still going to impact our customers. So that didn't help either. So for me, we can go on record and say, you know, vote it down. I'll vote it down. But it doesn't matter either way. I mean, from my perspective, because again, a board in the future can go back and change that policy, because that's what the board does.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I, uh, the, I mean, this has been a topic of discussion for the majority of my turn already. And I know that we have not had a very significant conversation about this, because the city of Eugene hasn't really made a final decision on whether or not this is going forward. It's always been, uh, a a potentially pull it from the ballot or to change it with another, uh, or do something different. And something different has happened. I still don't think that we have the appropriate information to be able to make a decision on that specific fee in at this moment, which may or may not be on the ballot. But we know that the city will be making that decision before they go on break in July. And so, um, and even think at our July meeting, we might not get this timing quite right. And so I I'm personally not in a position to be able to make a decision on the fee itself. But I think Commissioner Brown, you bring up really good questions of could, what would this look like? How could it affect our billing? And I think from my perspective, that's, I would support directing staff to explore, if that is a possibility, what that could look like. What it may entail to, if there is an additional fee of some type, to be able to have a clear, distinct yes or no, this is a thing that we could do. I think that I agree with Commissioner Carlson that, uh, if we put in a policy of no fees, not never. I think that that sends a challenging message and will also be a, a, wow, I got a full hour to chat. Uh, it will send a challenging message and also be a very, uh, administrative responsibility, I think, for staff to bring that forward if there's another fee presented or or some type. I I, we just don't have, I think, the appropriate information on this fee in particular. And I'm not in a position to make a broad sweeping statement for our board that no future fees can even be considered at this moment. I I think that that's shortsighted. And I would like to ask, I'm not seeking an answer from staff, but, um, well, if you have it. But the question that I have, that I haven't really seen a response to of this. But when has the last time, if ever, an agency, government agency or public utility of some type has requested non charter, uh, the city or this, uh, E-Web to put on a fee on our billing? Has this happened before?
More than seven years, I think, not a non city fee.
There's probably been requests for information about it.
The idea has has been floated, but a request not in my, not in my time either.
I I think that fuels my decision not to make a broad sweeping statement against a fee wholesale. Because this is not a consistent nor a common proposal that gets brought forward to this commission. And I would support future commissions to be able to, future boards, if that's all of us. But future boards to be able to make that decision themselves.
Able to make a fee on a utility.
This is not a public discussion. So I'm going to weigh in. Had a proposal come to us from the city of Eugene to put a fee on the bill. I would have considered the merits of that fee and the costs and benefits and 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 how that went to us. At this point, that's not really the question that is is before us tonight, especially in these motions. What what I see in these motions are us deciding as a board whether or not any type of of outside bill is appropriate to go on our on our bill. And until I'm, until I am, uh, presented with a hard and fast option that I can weigh the pros and cons to, I would have a hard time setting a policy that, no, we don't want to do that. So, uh, motion number one, that we develop a policy, I think is going a bit too far for me personally. Motion number two is getting closer to where we're at. Um, I'm not sure if it would actually get to where I'm at, but I think that that motion number two would send a message to whoever is out there to say, hey, if you want us to look at this, you better have a really good reason why and bring it to us and be able to articulate that, uh, to this board or whatever board that is in the future. So the difference between a policy and a resolution, I think, is where I would land, I would land more towards a resolution, considering where this one fell. And I I think that the reason that I could support the resolution way is for other entities, whether it's the City of Eugene or whoever, that they know going forward that it's not just a default. Oh, let's EWP will put it on the bill because that was out there in the ether for a year at least. Oh, EWP will will build this. We'll put this on EWP's bill. If we have a resolution that says we're not going to put something on the bill unless you can really show that it's not going to impact our customers and our our organization, we won't even consider it. Then then that sends a message to those people that if there's entities out there that are trying to raise revenue, that this isn't, we aren't the the collection agency for new revenue. So I would lean towards the second one. And as far as the tabling of the motion, I think that that does send a message to the community that yes, we're a partner with the City of Eugene. We want to be a partner with the City of Eugene. But we have our own issues, problems, and things that we want to accomplish as an organization. And a billing agency isn't at the top of our of our list. I would have been leading the charge very hard on this had it gone the other way and that there would have been services that would have been cut because of what what went forward. But I think a a a compromise was reached. It wasn't the best, but it it maintained some of those services. If they had come to us and said, these are the services that are going away, I would have had to think long and hard about that and and weighed those balances as to what, how that's going to affect this organization as opposed to the others. I'm not in that position now. And I don't want to have to be in that position going forward. So that's why I lean towards the resolution and out of two. Mr. Brown.
So for me, for us not taking a position, we're saying we're not willing to say no. So we're opening the door for them to come back. To me, you you look at the services they restored with this. I don't want to be any part of it. First, they said it was a fire fee, had nothing to do with fire. Now they say they they raised a stormwater fee, but how did they restore the library and Green Hill with a stormwater fee? It has nothing to do with stormwater. You know exactly what's going on here. I'm not going to use the the term that 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 it's. But for us to turn around and say, we're willing to risk post-launch customer finance system bug fixes, standardized financial reporting, customer interval data, customer prepaid programs, we're willing to risk delay and and postponement of all those programs that we've been working on for years to implement in our new billing system because of the city's desire to to potentially do this. I'm 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 willing to stand up and say no. You figure out how you collect it yourself. We'll help you. We'll we'll send a separate bill, but not on the EWP bill. Because once we open this Pandora's box, it's done. How do you think we got to 6% still instead of three? Go back and look at it. And and try and reverse it. Can't do it. I'm 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 not afraid to stand up to the city. I don't care. I mean, I do care. I care about our relationship and everything else. But I mean, we're we're good partners. So we're taking on their fire hydrants. We're doing all this other stuff. We're their largest single resource of of revenue. But to turn turn around and not give them an answer and to open that door to say, well, the door is still open. That's the message I think we're sending by by not taking a position and just saying no. You know, we we've got four things on there. We're already getting the EWP bill is going to go up because of the stormwater fees and and it's going to, it's going to go up 23% this year, not 18, because it already raised 5.7%. And it's scheduled to go up 5% a year for the next five years if you look at your CIP. So, um, to me, I'm it it's a, it's it's pretty straightforward to me and that that and I echo what Mindy said. She said it best at first one months ago when she said the question is whether or not we're willing to put a non EWP related bill charge on the EWP bill. If if we do, let's just stop calling it an EWP. Let's call it something else, a general fund. Because that's what it's going to be, because that's what exactly this we're doing. And so I just want to keep it simple because we've got so much pressure on the EWP bill now. Is what it is. And, you know, even if we adopt a policy, we can change any policy we want. So that's not bothering me a bit. And so, but why not give them a message and say no?
Sonya.
Well, I already went on record before saying I would say no, which is, I think, you know, part of the reason we said we're not going to move forward with it as it currently stands. Now, for me, the reason that I supported looking at it is that I think our fire is critical service. And there were some services that we were looking at, and we have not done any of that. We're not taking over their fire hydrants. That has not been something that has been decided. Though it desperately needs to be because it is a critical service this community desperately needs, especially in a time of climate change and the the dry fire seasons that we've been having. We need to have critical services that are maintained, and I trust our EWP staff and the processes and the engineering work that they do to figure out how to do that. And that's why I left the door open. When it was originally sold as a fire fee to protect that critical service, I really, I thought, yes, we absolutely need that because we need that as a basic function of our community. And that's why I said that I wanted to support it. Now, all these other things changed and, you know, they made a different pathway. I'll vote tonight to say no to it, but I don't think it's going to change the outcome if we said, let's table it because I don't think they're going to come back and revisit it personally. So if that's the will of the board to say no for a time certain, maybe the time certain for when this board changes hands, um, you know, I mean, we have two commissioners that are up for vote in two years. So we have potentially a new board at that point. Not necessarily. I mean, people can stay on, but I'm just saying that that is the next linchpin for when we go. I would support that. But I I think this back and forth, and I'm very frustrated that we've been put into this situation to begin with. And I I think even if we said no from the the get go, we would get more pressure to change our minds. So the city has changed. They have a path forward. It's going to impact our bill no matter what we do. So if it's the will of the board to say no tonight, I'm fine with that. I just want this conversation to end because I don't think it's productive anymore.
Yeah, the, um, I think that this, the conversation around the fire fee, I think, is is barreling towards inappropriate at this point. And and until a vote has been made, we don't have a decision on whether or not it even will go forward. And I, I mean, we can talk about the critical infrastructure. We could talk about how challenging it was that the city approached us in a a pretty direct way and has been changing sort of perspectives, it seems every month. But that I think is not a and that is not a a conversation that I am interested in having. The pitch, the concept itself that the city brought forward was a pitch to, from my perspective, and I was not on the the commission at this time, but in the audience, it was a pitch to stretch taxpayer dollars as they would have had to use some of the funds from their, uh, from this fee in order to build up their own administrative paying system or or payment system. And so we already had one built in. It's not a duplicative effort. That's how I heard it. That's something that is intriguing to me. Now, I recognize all of the other challenges with the fire fee, including the approach of that, but I'm not willing to declare a a a persona non grata or whatever of of total fees or even make this conversation about a a time certain type of fee because I think that we do not have an ability to know what the proposal is or what may be proposed to us. And so I don't know if I'm interested in having a a fee put on our billing system, but I'm interested to hear what a proposal might look like. Um, and I think that we are heading into a very, very challenging economic time in which we have to rely on our local partners more and more every day. And I say this with the the federal administration that is making broad sweeping cuts across the board. We have a state that had a $500 million budget shortfall forecast that just came out. Lane County announced a what 6.3 million dollar budget cuts. Eugene is a weird, it is budget cut season. And having the door open to being able to save taxpayer dollars is of interest to me. So I I'm I'm vehemently against the the first motion that's here. I'm very disinterested in the second motion. And I think I would, I'm choosing not to make a an alternative proposal, an alternative motion to direct staff to explore this, but I think there are still a lot of questions of if we could, what it could look like that we just don't have answered. So a at this time, I'm at this time, I'm 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 also disinterested in having a fire fee conversation, but I think that there's, there's a lot of ways we can support our community.
So first a little perspective as somebody who is sitting in the room and some of these in the Revenue Committee at the City of Eugene and and where some of these numbers ballyed about and and how EWP came to the the forefront as a a possibility was initially, it was it was ballyed around that it would be cheaper for EWP to do it as as some as EWP staff looked into it. And we realized the true cost, not only of dollar cost, but implementation of time. It was about equal as to whether we would bill it. It'd be the million to a million and a half, six to nine months to implement it. That was the ballpark that was put to the Revenue Committee as to what it would cost for an outside billing company to do it. So cost and time are going to be about equal. The the cost that and that's just dollars and time. That doesn't include what would be the opportunity costs that we would be losing as an organization by implementing it. So to me, that kind of also swayed it when I, when I asked, when we directed staff last month to go forward, because before that, it was just kind of informal banter. Oh, what could you do this? Oh, maybe we could if you did it by the you know, stormwater rates and this and that. And then as we dug in, we found out that, no, it's really much more complicated than that. So implementation and timing are about equal to a separate billing type of thing. So with that said, the second the second motion here, and this goes to you, Commissioner Brown, it says that we will not that we will direct the the general manager to that limit the use of EWP billing and collections to services of electricity, drinking water, and other services required by city charter or applicable law. And then we can say until repealed. And that would give us the opportunity to say that gives I mean, there, those were the three things, a time period, an expiration date, or until repealed. And I would lead, I would lead on to the until repealed in the second bullet, the second. No, the first one is a policy. The second one is is a is a what is it? Yeah, a resolution. So it goes changes to me, resolution, policy is highest level. Resolution is is on is a less direct. And I would, I would be in favor of doing that and say, unless repealed. And if somebody comes to us with a solid argument that says the fire department is going to be cut this much, and this is the way you can do it, and we can have that conversation, that would give a board the opportunity to repeal that resolution. And so that's kind of where I'm landing on this because that gives direction to so so that they can't, so that people don't look at us and say, oh, well, EWP can do it flippantly, when when we know that the the devil's in the details. So yes. So.
In practice, a policy and a resolution seem like the same thing to me. I mean, in in terms of staff either do the thing or don't. It it seems to me that they're very similar in terms of their overall impact. Deborah, can you, yeah, help?
I actually wanted to, the way the second option is written is for a specific time period for really to address those opportunity costs, unless it's repealed. So it is asking to in insert some sort of a time period there. And then you'd have the option to repeal. Same with motion number one, this, that could be repealed.
Right. But the main difference between one and two is one is just flat, we don't do this unless the board votes to change it. Number two is we are saying for a time it's on hold and we're not willing to look at this. Right? And it's, I mean, whether it's a policy versus a resolution, the impact is the same. So for me, it's kind of semantics at that point. You're either saying we're not going to do it for a certain amount of time, or you're saying we're period, we're not going to do it. And then they would have to come back and convince the board to make the change. For me, either way, it honestly it's, again, for me, it's it's kind of the same thing because at any point in time, we could come back and choose to vote on it again. So I would like to, we have a motion on the floor and I'd like to call to vote. And if we fail that, then we can look at our other options, but.
We state the motion.
The table.
Table to date certain.
Table to no date certain.
A no date certain.
No date certain. We just table it.
It's not debatable.
Okay, all in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion fails.
Good.
So may I offer a compromise?
Yep.
So I'm willing to jump on number two for two years because that's when the board rolls over. But I just, I want to caution you about how this could play out. And you're setting yourself up. Because if you turn around and say, we're willing to consider a fee, and Tim, I'll I'll talk to you about whether or not that was really a fire fee. Why do you think the firefighters never came and said, we want this? There's nothing, you did 2 million out of 10 with fire. Rest of it was all general fund. But that's an aside. Because if you turn around and say, we're willing to consider this, so they're going to come to you with something, they're going to defund the police, they're going to defund the fire, they're going to defund all that, and then put it on you. If you don't put it on the bill, it'll be the EWP's board fault that it didn't pass, the critical stuff. And and so you're going to be forced to do it. And you're not, I don't think you're going to have an option. And that's what I'm afraid of because that's politics. And that's why I was adamant about getting there, but I'm I'm willing to go with number two. And and for for to to date certain, you know, for a time period of two years unless previously repealed. Just modify that, just say for a period of two years or, you know, 62127 unless repealed.
Okay, second.
Discussion. I don't know if two years is enough, John.
Well, they made, they made the stormwater fee six years.
So let me, and let me tell you why. I I I think that if if that's, if what we want is to not be considered as a as a revenue collection option, in 2027, there's going to be a vote on the community saving payroll tax. And if that for some reason fails, they're going to be scrambling for any kind of revenue that they can get. And so if we put this out there till 2027, I think we, it would behoove us to if we want to take it off the table, take it off the table for a a longer period of time. That's just my my.
I'll accept a friendly amendment or a withdrawal of the motion.
That Deborah, you wanted to speak.
I did just want to add that in that in that motion, it speaks to organizational priorities around modernization, and we're about four or five years out from completing our roadmap on our modernization.
So the goal would be to, so we don't risk losing everything. It's it's an organizational impact. The goal would be to is is to limit adding this to the bill until we can at least implement, you know, time of use and all these other things that we're risking by by putting some non EWP on the bill. So that's, that's why you say four to five years would be an appropriate period of time.
If you're looking to move it outside of the outside of the range in which we will be delaying our own modernization, that would be the timeframe.
Okay, second.
So I would say four years.
Four years worth, Deborah?
Unless unless repealed and.
Unless repealed.
Okay, I can do four years.
Tim.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this. I think it's a bad message. We think I think what the pitch was of this specific fee were specific services in our community. But if there are other critical services that directly affect EWP such as SDCs or other other issues, I don't want to close that specific door.
A question that I would have would be, would, do we contract out our billing?
We have third party providers.
So we have third party providers. So let me give you a hypothetical. If the, if the city came to us and said, we want to implement a new fee and we want to set up a billing system, could we help them facilitate sending out their own bill through our third party? You know, just say, hey, we've got a relationship with this billing agency and, and this and that. And so it would be a total separate bill. But maybe some of the administrative costs or whatever could be, could be saved by doing it that way.
I don't know if Julie is sitting behind me wanting to chime in.
I mean, we could make an introduction. I think anytime you're going to use some of our data to help that along, right? As a baseline, that's where we get into the difficulties of having two completely separate collection streams.
Right. Okay. And, and that's just something that I'm thinking. I mean, again, as far as working with, with our partners at the city, our, our chartered mom and dad basically, because that, that they are, they do sign off every time we want to get a bond, right? They have to, they have to agree to us to, to do it. So in that sense, you know, anytime we would have an opportunity to work with them, not necessarily putting it on our bill or whatever, but being able to help facilitate or do those types of things, I would, I would encourage us to keep that line of communications open. Because I think at some point, if they do come up with another revenue stream, they will probably end up having to do a billings thing. That's what they did do when they did the community, the payroll tax. It was, it wasn't done through the Department of Revenues. They set up their own contract with Muni Revs and, and, and it costs them about a million dollars a year to implement it. But that's the cost of doing business. I think we have one. So as of right now, the motion that I have heard is motion number two, with a time certain of four year period. And unless repealed. Is that what the people on the floor feel? No? Yes. So you go ahead.
I'm going to vote for it. So I hope we can end this discussion because again, any board can come back and bring this at some other date and we can open the whole can of worms back up again. But I would really like to stop talking about it at this point because the city, I don't think is going to move on it. They've found another path forward. So I feel like we're arguing about something that they're not even looking for us to have anymore. So, okay, let's vote, please.
Tim? Yeah. And I'll just, the last thing I'll say on that is I, I agree. I think this sends a signal to the city that we, we tried, but it's just not going to work for us at this, this date and time. And that gives them a clear signal if they have something going forward that this isn't the avenue for billing. So with that, I will call for the vote, all in favor of motion number two with a four year time period. So we'll say July, end of fiscal year. So that would be good. July, July 1st of whatever four years.
Date July 1st, 2029?
Yeah. Let's do it June 30th. That's the end of the city's fiscal year.
I like that better.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? I, I oppose. That's Carrie's three to one. Thank you people for all your work on that. It's time for a break. We are five minutes ahead schedule. Thank you. I'm going to move on to item number 11. But before that, I just wanted, I was asked by staff to just clarify what the motion was and the makers of the second. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the past motion that we just made. Give the organizational motion, limit EWEB's billing collections for a specific period. I move that the board direct the general manager or designate develop a resolution for board consideration, limiting the use of EWEB billing and collection services to electricity, drinking water, and/or services required by city charter or applicable law until 6/30/2029 unless repealed. That was made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Carlson. There was a friendly amendment that changed it from two years to four years by Commissioner Borowski. And that passed three to one. So just a clarification for the record and people who were watching and didn't have the opportunity to see the motion that was brought up us.
Um, John?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, so if the motion was then to make a resolution, we can't just do that? Cause I thought we just did it. We didn't need a separate resolution. But the way you just read that meant that we had to direct staff to then write a resolution that we'll then have to vote on again. I didn't think that that's what we voted on, to be clear.
That was what the second, when we said we will.
I, I just want to know, do, do staff actually have to write then a resolution that we then have to vote on?
That does say staff write.
That was not how we, that was not how it was proposed. Did you intend it to be proposed as staff have to write a resolution or we just?
Yeah, my, my proposal was, my proposal was to follow the guidelines outlined in, in option number two as Commissioner Borowski has indicated. And that does include, include directing the general manager designate develop a resolution for board consideration. So we get another look at it. I mean, it can come back on a consent calendar. Resolutions always come back on consent calendars.
We can have it on consent for July. So then it would come back as an official resolution with a resolution.
Yeah. Good. Cause I'd like to note that we're already over time for July's budget. I think we're, we're maxed out on time. We're going to be here till really late July without adding anything to the agenda.
Yeah, I think it could come back to consent.
Consent. Does that work?
Yes. And, and, and to me, that makes me feel a little bit better because Commissioner Schlossberg will be here at that time. It would also have an opportunity to comment if she felt it was appropriate. So, okay, let's move on to the next item, which is the CIP plan and priorities.
Oh, that's me. Good evening, President Borowski and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Deborah Hart, Assistant General Manager and CFO. With me is Karen Kelly, our Chief Operating Officer. We're here to talk about the assumptions and priorities in the capital plan that will feed the long-term financial plan. Our agenda will, will go over the planning process and how the board fits in to that process. Our business and economic forecast and assumptions, touch a little on some of our concerns as well. Our investment priorities, some of the challenges and risks that we have in our capital improvement plan, and leave time for question and discussion. There's no requested action this evening. It's about getting your direction. So the planning process is driven by the strategic work and prioritization that the board and management engage in. The guidance that management receives tonight from, from you all is what will feed the capital improvement plan and the long-term financial plan processes. These will provide a long-term view of the financial impacts that inform near These will provide a long-term view of the financial impacts that inform near-term decisions, which then leads us to the annual budgeting processes, the annual revenue requirement, and the cost of service analysis. From that work, management will then develop budgets and price proposals for the board's consideration. So we're here today in that green box, bringing our economic assumptions and investment priorities for the board's discussion and guidance. We'll be back here next month with the draft CIPs and the long-term financial plans to share with you all preliminary results that are based on the guidance that we get here this evening. At the July board meeting, we'll be seeking direction on business and economic forecasts, as well as the 10-year capital investment plans, which will be used to develop the upcoming 2026 budgets and rate proposals for fall. Per board policy inconsistent with the EO1, projects are categorized by two types. Type one projects are defined as general capital renewal and replacement. These are typically routine compulsory to maintain or improve system reliability and cost less than $3 million. Type two projects are defined as infrastructure rehabilitation and expansion. They're typically discrete products, projects of replacement enhancement or expansion that are multi-year and greater than $3 million for the life of the project. To prioritize which projects are to be included in the CIP, projects are classified as compulsory, strategic, or risk-based. Compulsory projects are required work with specific timelines, such as new service connections or the replacement of failed equipment or infrastructure. Strategic projects are aligned with the strategic plan. Examples of those today would be Carmen Smith or the second treatment facility. And risk-based projects are driven by asset management plans and principles, reliability and resiliency goals, and our customer needs. We have a series of policy assumptions. First, that the annual spending will be balanced such that we have the resources within that year. Second, that we stay within board financial policies. So those are those metrics that you touched on, President Borowski, in the reserve transfer. And the third is that we have capital reserves set at our yearly depreciation amounts. In earlier this evening, in the correspondence on reserves, we did recommend that the electric reserve go up to 27 million to reflect the changes in depreciation that we're seeing. So that's in the finance, in the red line financial policy that we shared earlier. We do tie labor escalations to inflation factors and labor market comparators. And non-labor is assumed at 2%. With persistent pressure in construction, capital inflation is assumed at 5% for the next two years. For, for the next two years before it goes to three for the duration of the plan. And the lines in the chart represent compounded inflation rates for construction projects, with blue being what was experienced in the market and orange being EWEB's planning numbers. Investment rate is one of the levers that the board can give some guidance related to the trade-off between expenses, rates, and results like reliability and financial metrics. Historically, 2.5 times the 10-year average annual depreciation amount provided a reasonable balance between reliability and affordability. In 2021, though, the board did support increased spending rates in both water and electric to support strategic projects and replace aging infrastructure at a higher rate with a goal to increase resiliency and reliability. And with that, Karen.
Okay, so I'll be covering what our investment priorities are for water, electric, and shared services, as well as covering what the risks are that we're looking at for our capital plans. So to start with electric investment priorities, we're currently meeting our age of system target at 55% and have planned capital investments to reach the goal of 50% by 2030, while staying below an investment rate of 3.0 for our compulsory and risk-based projects. Drivers for these particular investments include the Lieber Canal near-term risk reduction measures and balancing that work with the longer-term decommissioning strategies. Also included are dam safety compliance, specifically meeting the many and varied concerns around construction safety with the Walterville Four Bay Seabridge Repair and Trail Bridge Fish Passage. There are a lot of unknowns still with these projects that could, could change things for us. For transmission and distribution improvements, I want to call your attention to the photo that I took last week out at Danabo Substation. The work to be done is a prerequisite for the rebuild of the Justin Substation, which is the case with much of our capital work. There are prerequisites there that, that things have to go in certain orders in order to make the system still function while we're doing upgrades. And for at least the last decade, probably much longer, we've been battling aging infrastructure and chasing that dream of proactive improvements to reduce our reactive repairs. We are starting with substation rebuilds and upgrades because they are the most impactful to the community from an outage perspective. Also considered to be the biggest bang for the buck benefit per dollar. Each substation supplies 3,000 to 5,000 customers, and they will see a benefit of avoiding substation trips as we modernize and improve those systems. However, on the strategic investment side, specifically in meeting our requirements negotiated with the relicensing of the Carmen Smith project, we have been pushed a bit above our investment target in the strategic area. Moving on to water, our water investments have remained steady, showing age of system at 39%, which is by design following investment strategy laid out by our master planning process. We are slightly above target for the investment at 3.2 times the 10-year depreciated amount for compulsory and risk-based work. Investment drivers for this work include our base level water storage improvements following the distributed storage strategy and the required replacement of College Hill. Transmission work includes revolving hydraulic constraints by connecting up our resilient spine. Also, however, on the strategic end, investments necessary to build the Willamette River Treatment Plant has pushed us well above the target investment. In addition, we have investment priorities that we're still managing with AMI, EWEB Enterprise Solutions, and the Bertelson Property Development, which have impacts to both the water and electric capital plans. So moving on to our risks in the plans. You can see on this slide, we have issues around inflation, timing of the projects, and the capacity to do the work. All of those issues impact the results, our rate trajectories, scope trade-offs, and our resource needs. We will need guidance from the board on balancing the risk-to-quality reliability and resiliency of our services with what it costs to bring those values to our customers. Because of the large-scale projects early in the CIP, a 5% inflation rate assumption for 2026 construction translates to about 3.4 million in water and 4.9 million in electric. That's roughly a 9% rate impact to water and a 3% rate impact to electric. Bond financing aspects of the CIP enables us to spread otherwise immediate impacts of some of our projects over time, not all. For electric, changes in the CIP you can see in this chart are mostly related to Carmen Smith relicensing projects. Specifically delays in upcoming deadlines are putting pressure in the early years of the plan. And for water, you can see in the chart, changes in the CIP is mostly due to increased cost on the second source projects. Our capital plans need to continue to have flexibility as we're dealing with a variety of risks that persist and have intensified in terms of impact to our operations. In fact, earlier in the slides, I mentioned Danabo Substation work. That project has been plagued by supply chain issues recently. The team is attempting to remedy them through shifting work at the station out of order, so out of the normal process, but also having the contractor supplying the switchgear, which is critical to the project timeline. So they're, they are trying to mitigate for this. Any delays here, though, also delay that work at Justin. And you can see the rest of the risks that we're juggling listed on this slide. This is true again, every year we have these struggles, but constantly trying to balance them again between what value these projects bring, what we're trying to accomplish as we set forth in our capital plan expansion, expansion in 2021, trying to balance the costs that are keep rising. What will these projects cost if they're delayed now, 10 years from now? History is telling us, maybe, they may become even more unaffordable. So those are some of the risks, and now back to Deborah.
Really back to you, President Borowski. We're, we have a couple of questions up here as conversation starters, but we're here to hear from you where your, what areas of risk you want to prioritize, making sure we're mitigating, and what are higher and lower priorities to you all, and how affordability plays in there.
Great, thank you for the presentation. I will open it up to Commissioners for questions, comments, or answers to some of these questions that are very difficult. So.
Back to page 30, or slide 33. Okay, so when we're talking about the age of the system, is that measured by the value of the asset, like the dollar asset value? That's measured? Okay, so then, when we have a massive project that gets redone, it has a skewing impact on the overall. Like, we were closer to that years ago, and then we had to do these other big projects. So over time, that will ramp back up again as those projects that are skewing it go through, right?
Yes, the math is that as we put a big service, a big project into service, that does bring down that age of system. And over time, what we look for is to maintain at an appropriate rate. But it will wax and wane depending on what projects we put into service.
It seems like it's really hard to measure an overall service when you're looking at, you know, different assets that have different lifespans. You know, if you want the average to be a certain thing, I mean, you have to recognize that some of your assets, you can't push that any further past that, that life. I mean, like we saw with College Hill, I mean, it was leaking, it was a safety hazard, it was not seismically sound. We can't, you know, the state said, hey, you can't run this anymore. I mean, there, there are certain things that we can't do anything about. So I, I just, it's just a comment because I, I think people see that, oh, we're at 60%. Well, we're way over spending if we're down at 39%. But that's really not what the math behind that figure says.
And it really is just one point that we look at to make those decisions, so, um, yes.
Okay. Um, and then can we go back to the other questions?
Yeah, just before we do that too, I want to mention that the, the master plan for water, by design, we did a lot of work at Hayden Bridge, and that did bring, help bring that age of system down. So, you know, and then the, the idea, of course, may not be the reality in the end, but if we were to move towards that second water treatment plant investment, you know, we're going to have to push out a lot of the other renewal projects that we would have otherwise done. So I would imagine you will start to see that number come up.
I guess building off of that too, I'm, I'm assuming that our, our value in the age of those products, I mean, it's, it's depreciated. Right, so maybe you have a project that's already been mostly depreciated, and it's still in there, but the replacement value of that is massive compared to what? So if it's in the 20, you know, 60, or not 2060, but $1960 compared to what replacement cost of that project would be, it's drastically different as well. Correct, because it's in.
So it's an imperfect measure. Uh, and again, one thing that we use to look at the health of our system, and it is skewed by large projects coming online. And certainly, things are more expensive than when they were put into service.
Yeah, it almost seems like we should have the value of that aged product in today's dollars versus what our, you know, current age of product is in today's dollars, so that it was a little bit. Anyway, not going to get into that too much. I just wanted to comment on that because it looks drastically different. Okay, um, the last question slide. Okay, um, you know, for me, it's, it's just really challenging because it's all this balancing act. We have, we were, we were trying to mitigate costs and risk by implementing a number of these projects and, and putting off some of the projects. Our water, second source water treatment plant seemed like it was, you know, a valid solution to put it off so we could try to work with our partners next door, our neighbors next door, and they didn't want to work with us. So we put it off, and now it's going to cost almost double what it would have seven years ago. Now, you know, none of us has a crystal ball, we could go into recession, and maybe the cost would go down, really don't know. The, 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 the thing that we do know is that we do want to keep things affordable as possible, but we do have a, the aging infrastructure that our community relies on, and we can't service our public without these projects. They, they are aging in spite of the fact that that says 39% when it's really heavily skewed with, you know, different data. So for me, um, I think we need to, we need to look at the projects and where possible, if there are areas where we can push out to deal with supply chain issues that might be more of a uh, short-term situation, that we see if we can push some of those projects out until the supply chain issues are not an issue to, to try to do with that, because that, that's going to have an inflationary pressure immediately on the, the prices that we're paying. But the projects as a whole, I think, are still valuable to move forward. In terms of our second source, our substations, we don't want to lose the momentum, the staff knowledge behind building those. I think it's, it's really valuable to have those substations built, built out in succession because you have, you know, once you do something, you can do it better the second time, you learn all those lessons. I think it's very valuable to do them sequentially so that we don't lose that staff knowledge. It will just get more efficient, it will get better for them to work together to get that, those projects done. So those are, that's my two comments, and I'll leave the rest to others. Thanks.
Mr. Brown. Help me understand non-labor escalation, 2%. What is that?
That's the escalation that we're building into next year's budget in the long-term financial plan for things that are not labor and not capital.
Can you give me a definition of what, just give me an example.
Like our cleaning service.
Okay, okay, so that's more operational rather.
It's O and M costs.
Okay, and so your inflation projections on these, were they made before we've had this tariff game? Because of all of our products are bought from overseas?
They were made in the midst, and we looked to market indicators on, for.
I mean, like, 50%.
If, if, if there is a 50% tariff on steel, then yes, we'll see an impact bigger than 5%.
Yeah, and that's my, that's my concern. And so, um, just before I tell you what my priorities are, are our safety and safety rates of 95% or above on both water and electric?
Uh, I'd have to go look at the latest metrics. Mike and Tyler are in the back, they might be able to speak to it. Go ahead, Tyler.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're within our five-year benchmark when we track every year, and then we're on those well below our kind of pure utility benchmarks. Not sure what the 95% is referring to, but we'll be based on compared to every year.
Yeah, comparative, because I know that the first 95% of reliability costs one thing, and that last 5% costs
Oh, I got what you meant.
A ton more, and I just was wondering if we, we're, we're still staying within that metric of staying right up to the top.
We're still within our band of five-year average.
Okay, thank you. So to me, it's affordability based upon, I mean, you know, we can't run anything to failure. This is not an option, but it's all the affordability, because we, I mean, I just, real quickly, I mean, we've got, what, $100 million of unamortized cost of licensing on Lieber and Walterville that we're going to pay for with no revenue. We've got $250 million of decommissioning for Lieber. If Walterville goes dark on us, another quarter of a million, a billion, 250 million to decommission that. We have so many pressures that we haven't experienced yet on rates that, and this, like she said tonight, this is a commodity, she didn't have a choice. It's just, it's, it's really heartbreaking to think about where we could go with this if this thing goes off the rails. So affordability is really important to me, um, and, and measuring that balance with reliability. It's, I, that's your dial, I mean, but, but to me, it's affordability because. I mean, but, but to me, it's affordability because, like I said, people don't have a choice. And so to me, affordability is the most important thing. Staying with, and if you want clarification, ask a clarifying question, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I, if you have an, an idea in your head is what affordability is, like a, a rate?
Well.
Not enough to increase above X?
Well, don't, yeah, we, we used to have a policy, I mean, when I first got on the board, staff would come to us and say, this is how much money we'd need and we'd raise rates to reflect that. Then we turned around, I call it the Metall era, and we turned around and said, no, you're going to stay within inflation. And then live with it. And that's the, that's the policy that basically the board, the direction the board gave in a, in a general sense. And I think we're deviating from that now because there's so much upward pressure on rates. And it's not anybody's fault, but it's just happening. And, and to me, I'd like to go back to, to that affordability thing. Because I think we try and stay within three percent of the AGI. But I think we have a, a skewed AGI in our community because of whole large student population. And I think it's, it's, you know, like, like they said in our little two-on-ones, it, it's five percent of the people qualify for, for assistance. But there's more like twenty percent of the people really qualify, they just don't get it. And so the, the affordability factor is huge in this community and it's only going to get worse, it's going to get exacerbated. So, you know, I think if we stay within that three to three and a half percent, isn't that our target? Of the AGI?
Oh, our, our affordability metric, yes.
Yeah, and, and, and so if we can stay within that and, and, and use good comparators, I'm okay with that. And then see what that does to the budget. That's my.
So can I just clarify? So, so you're looking to benchmark it to the utility burden number?
Yep, right.
Thank you, Chair. Um, on page thirty, can you, for my own edification, general economic assumptions, capital escalation, can you describe the, can, can you share the rationale of why it goes five percent, four percent, and then three percent?
We show it.
At the bottom left.
Five, five for twenty-six, five for twenty-seven, then four, then four, then three. And the market indicators that we look at, um, show it returning over time to that three percent number. And that is what the Federal Reserve manages to, to control inflation. So we're acknowledging that we may see, and actually five percent is a little higher than, uh, than some of the figures that we're seeing. But to Commissioner Brown's point, we also hear a lot about tariffs. So, uh, so the rationale is that we're guarding against short-term inflation and then returning to a more normal, uh, target.
I appreciate that, yeah. Thank you, it was, uh, helpful to, to hear that. Um, yeah, I, uh, I'm, I want to echo the, the, the need for affordability. And I think that that's, I, I know that we are balancing every single plate possible. I have something of a concern of, of, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, um, for supply chain issues that since COVID, that it, it has pretty steadily been increasing on supply chain issues. That there hasn't been, there hasn't seemed to have been a, a plateau or a, uh, it going down. Um, so I, I do have a somewhat concern about pushing off projects that have supply chain issues right now. But it's a very light concern. Uh, yeah, I, I, affordability, I think, is always top of mind for me. And that is something that I want to recognize. I also want to recognize, I mean, this is a challenge that I think our whole city is facing. I mean, our, the majority of our homes and projects and everything was built in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties. We're reaching end of life for everything. This is not an exclusive eWeb issue, this is not a, this is a challenge I think we're all facing. Um, and I, uh, would be remiss, I forgot a point. Thank you for the great presentation, this is, uh, very good information, challenging information. But, um, it is, uh, we are spying, I know that we're spinning fifteen hundred plates at the same exact time and trying to keep things as affordable as possible. And that it's, it's, it's a challenging position to be in, so.
Thank you. So I guess, let's see, third, to go to slide thirty-one for me for a second, I just got a couple of questions on that. So on the bottom where it said we increased our water and rest investment rate from three point five to four point five, is that percent, was that a rate increase or was that going to, we wanted to be at two point? So historically, you want to put two and a half percent of your depreciation going to capital, right?
Two and a half times the depreciation.
Right.
Historically where we sat.
Yeah, and that's industry standard, that's if you can benchmark. So are we at three and a half to four and a half? On the water side?
Yes.
We're spending three and a half to four and a half percent of our capital. And, and the, and I, and I, go ahead.
Sorry, that was the jump that.
Right.
And in twenty twenty-six, it's five times.
Okay, five times of our depreciated value.
Our annual depreciation.
Right. The question I have is, when we gave you direction to do that, was that in anticipation of second, second source?
Second source was in the conversation. I, I, I probably should have attached the twenty twenty-one board materials. I think we attached them last year, uh, it was a.
And I kind of recall it, and I'm just, the, the question that I have is, you know, you, now you get back to the, to the, the questions that you're asking us. And is it reliability, is it affordability, is it a combination of the both? Certain levers we can turn and it, it may change our rates fractionally. And there's ones that we would like to turn, like Commissioner Brown talked about. Uh, some of our licensing ones that we really would love to turn, but we really can't because we're, we're locked into those ones. The only one that I see that is a, is a big lever to turn is second source as far as if you want to go from reliability to affordability. And up until last month, I was hearing the hundred million dollar price tag. And that's where I was buying in on. And then last month, that somebody threw around a hundred and sixty million dollars. And that gave me pause. Because going from seventy million dollars to a hundred and sixty million dollars, that is a dial that would absolutely lean into affordability, in my view. Whether it's, and, and the question that I have is, do we even have the capacity to fund a hundred and sixty million dollars outside of rates? If we wanted to, if we wanted to do it with debt service and level that out, like you guys alluded to, how much leveling can we do and how much is going to have to be put onto rates? Um, so to me, that's the conversation that I, that I need to have as far as implementing this. Because I don't know if it's going back and talking to our partners in Springfield again and seeing if there's a way to partner up again, because I'm sure that they're seeing the same pressures on what they're doing. Um, but I, I don't know, I don't know, a hundred and sixty million dollars. And then the second lever is, is Roosevelt expansion. You know, we, we've, I've heard s- little bit of things that, okay, we're going to gravel it out. And it's like, okay, good, but then, then I hear it's a ten or twenty million dollar project. And, and I haven't seen that. And hopefully that will be lined out in the CIT as to what the full effect of Roosevelt expansion is. Because as of right now, I haven't seen those numbers. I've seen, I've seen consent calendar cut things for grading and this and that and three and five million dollars. But I haven't seen that total cost for next door. And so those are, those are things that I need to see to be able to give you my input as to what is reliability, what is rate of, and what can we live with and live without. And I, as much as I want second source, and I believe in second source, and I've been selling second source. I've been driving to Salem and selling second sources to our legislators. I've been doing all this work for three years on second source. And now to realize that second source might be something that would really impact our customers is giving me pause. So that's, that's, I need more information on that. We'll go second round, Sonya.
I mean, to that same thing, I started thinking about Leeburg. And, you know, that is a much bigger cost, that's almost two hundred and fifty million. Now, I know we have dam safety issues, but if we're not putting any water in the canal and we also have no FERC people potentially to respond to any of our, our work there. I'm just wondering how much of that work really even can do if some of that could be pushed off. Because it's not like our community relies on it. If it comes through, the people up there don't really want it to happen any, you know, sooner than it has to. Um, for me, I'd love to see that one be pushed if it's possible. Now, I know we have some that are regulatory really required to do X before that date. So I'd love to hear some thoughts on delaying Leeburg.
Uh, if we're going to have a second source discussion, could we wrap in the feasibility of the North Well Field? Um, that we have, you know, I don't know if anybody's aware of that, that we, we have a series of wells that have already been drilled and cat, and capped, encased in the North Eugene area. Although, although when we implemented them, they drew down one of our, uh, another utilities, water supply. But in the event of emergency, I think it's going to be, you know, we just got to get water out of the system. It doesn't matter whose system it comes from. And so if it's a reliable resource and it's a fallback, I'd just like to have that conversation too. But if we're going to bring up second source, I'd like to bring that up too. I'm sorry, Sonya, I cut you off.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, have staff respond, I think Lisa is here. I don't know if, if someone could respond on this, the second, or on the Leeburg Dam and any, you know, flexibility we might have there to stretch that further.
Hi there, good evening. Yes, I'll chime in here. It's a really good question, Commissioner Carlson. Uh, it's obviously more complicated, um, than any of us would probably like. We do have some dam safety concerns even during this time where we have decided to decommission but have not yet implemented that. We have some near-term risk reduction measures that we do need to implement in the, the next, uh, you know, five to seven years. That said, there is a bit of a clock ticking for us for, uh, starting action on the actual decommissioning. And that's related primarily to, uh, really FERC's desire for us to take action. They have not mandated a timeframe for us, but we have a lot of indications that we need to move, uh, more quickly rather than slowly in actually implementing, uh, decommissioning. The work that we have planned for the next handful of years includes implementing those near-term risk reduction measures. Those frankly are not something that we can delay because they are, um, uh, intended to address near-term potential public safety risks. Uh, but our planning towards decommissioning, since it's such a long-term process, is not something that I would recommend we postpone. Because at this point, we're already looking out about eight to ten years before we have shovels in the ground to start the, the decommissioning work. Because the, the process to get to that approval to start that decommissioning is so lengthy. Um, you know, we can look at ways to potentially cut costs. Uh, but I, I don't think that we have a lot of flexibility in delaying long-term.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I, I would look to staff if there are any other projects that we think are not regulatorily required. Um, and or, you know, based on safety, required to do right now. And maybe that's, you know, second source, maybe it's something else. I'd just love some additional thoughts. If we want to hit our affordability goals, which I would love to, um, you know, I, the first five, six years I was on the board, we didn't vote for any rate increases and I would love to be in that place. I also recognize that because we didn't do any rate increases during that time, the rate increases that we're now seeing are much larger. And so, you know, people don't appreciate that either. So I don't want to be in that situation either. Um, but yeah, any feedback that staff could give on some, what do we have in terms of wiggle room? Um, I would appreciate it.
So over in the next month, uh, we will be working on identifying potential areas and, and the trade-offs associated with that so that we could have a conversation about trade-offs and associated risks of any, anything that we cut out of the capital plan.
And, and I'm just going to weigh in, you know, I, I know that rates are, are important and, and something that we need to take seriously. But also addressing our capital needs is, to me, as important. You know, I would not like to see us go below two point five percent over the ten years. Um, I've seen other entities do that and it comes back to bite them. You know, you say, oh, well, we'll go to two percent and the age of infrastructure with it. Then, then that age thing keeps going up and then it costs more to, to do it going forward. Um, to me, that two and a half percent is, that is the bottom line for me. Uh, you know, and, and if, if we can figure out how to get some of the major projects done and have rate, and have rate increases that are tolerable. I, I think our, I hate to say this, you know, but I think that our rates are generally, uh, affordable uh, in, in comparison to other communities. There are some communities that are, that are less, obviously, and our annual, our wages are lower than other communities, so that, that makes it tougher. But we're still not at the six percent, you know, of what, uh, uh, the household burden line is at. So just, I'm not opposed to having, saying no, we don't want to increase rates at all, we want to just cut, cut, cut. I think that we have to, we have to replace our infrastructure as far as buying transformers and those types of things. I'm for leaning forward into that rather than leaning back, you know, having them, buying them now for use in two to three years, if there's the opportunity to do that. Um, because they're just going to be more expensive in two to three years and we know we're going to need them. So, um, I'm not opposed to raising rates to make sure that our infrastructure and our capital is, is maintained to the effect that it needs to be maintained. Other comments or questions? Staff, do you have a general idea of, or do you have other questions that you'd like to ask us, clarifying questions?
What I understood is that affordability is a priority. Um, but also concern over our aging infrastructure and that where we have trade-offs, you'd like to understand what those trade-offs and those associated risks are. And we'll be working on that, um, between now and when we're back here in July. Did you have anything to add, Karen?
No, I, I'll end on a high note though, that your question about Bertelson, yes, we've already decided that's an easy one to put off. Because we're finishing phase two this year. That was phased out to, you know, potential of six phases depending on needs. We'll put it into good use, we'll make use of it and find out, you know, what is necessary for the future. But we can save that and take that out of next year's capital plan. And there's a, there's a bright spot for you.
One other question, and, and this kind of just, just goes to kind of what Commissioner Brown was bringing up in the consent calendar and, and something that other jurisdictions are, are looking to is, do we have surplus properties that could be sold off? I mean, capital is one time, you know, one-time monies for one-time expenses. You know, if we've got, if we're sitting on properties that we don't feel we're going to be needing or utilizing in the future, is that an area that we could look into? Uh, you know, if we, if, if, if we can sell off a piece of property and go to phase three or phase four on Bertelson, that may, you know, that wouldn't necessarily impact rates as, as, as it would. And if, if there's, because I don't know what I'll be all, every time I, I, I drive around, it's like, oh, yeah. And if if there's, because I don't know what I'll, every time I I I drive around, it's like, oh, yeah, we own this and oh, yeah, there's that. And so that that would be something that would be a question that could be asked as well. All right. Thank you very much for the presentations. We'll move on to our next item, which is board wrap up. And and one of the things that was brought up is in board wrap up is staff would like to have a little bit of a conversation about the Upriver meeting, your your impressions, your takeaways, anything you would like to share about how the Upriver meeting went. So with that, we'll just go around the room. We'll start with Tim. And any other comments that you have in board wrap up?
I have no comments for board wrap up, other than a, a thank you for a tough conversation, I think, or a few tough conversations. It's our place to be in, and so I appreciate that, the willingness to jump into that. I, Upriver meeting, I had the wonderful opportunity to sit at the table with Lisa, who did a fabulous job, making sure everyone was heard and also kind of working through the the discussion items. Also, we sort of went completely off track as well with with that, with Lisa at the table. So I think we didn't hit every discussion item, but we got into really great conversations about the need, the challenges that E web faces. I I walked away from it with a really positive aspect to it. I think that that many of the community members just felt and appreciated that. And I know that I'm I'm new to this commission, so I was not there for some of the more challenging past year conversations that were there, but this, this was a, I think, a great chance to to have everyone's frustrations and concerns and opinions heard and have that as a part of our our culture. And to be able to to really connect with with our Upriver, our Upriver customers. So yeah, I I walked away from it with a really positive outlook on it. I think every person that I had a chance to chat with there had a a an appreciation to E web in some form or fashion. And I think that it's a, it's a great idea and also a great dinner.
Sonya.
I appreciated all the work that staff put into it. It was, you know, a new format. I didn't get to participate last year. I was out of town during that one, so I know this is our second year. At it, we also went and didn't answer any of the questions because we followed what the people that, you know, came there, we that what they wanted to talk about. And so I appreciated that there were report outs from each group. I would recommend in the future, if we go up there and do this again, that we have the tables. Maybe we have some topics that we just that we throw out there, but it doesn't need to be as, I think, structured. People just came there to talk and get questions answered and get feedback and and I liked the report out from the table of kind of the general topics that were discussed. I thought that was valuable. I will reiterate again that I think it's a huge amount of staff time that goes into preparing for that and expense for a very small portion of our customer base, but I know that we have a lot of challenging issues up there, so continuing to have good rapport with the folks up there can be valuable. That's what I'll say. Thank you.
Yeah, I attended a lot of them, and some of them are good and some of them are challenging, but I think this format is best if we're going to continue to do it. I happened to sit with the general manager and the board president of Lane Electric. And the conversation always goes to, you know, why is this Lane Electric's territory? Why is it ours? Because, you know, fifty percent of our service territory is comprised of twenty three hundred customers or whatever, and that's Upriver. And it makes only sense to have Lane Electric own that asset. And hopefully, we can have that dialogue with Lane Electric sooner than later. Now, they have a new general manager and maybe a different perspective on that. I, you know, whether or not we do another one or not, I don't know. I mean, it's good to let the people think they're being heard because they don't think they have a voice. They have a voice. I was the the Mindy my first term, the with the area of of all of them. And that was when they just, they thought it was fun to beat up on everybody. I got absolutely pounded for three years. It was terrible. But I'm, I think it's still worthwhile if if staff thinks it's worthwhile. But I, you know, I came out with, it was, I didn't come out with any new perspectives, that the the communication was the big thing about we could, could we communicate better? But when they when they said they wanted us to to find the areas of relief for storms and stuff, I don't think that's in our mission statement to provide facilities for storm relief, you know, when it gets hot, where they can go to cooling stations and when it gets cold, but they go get warm things. And so that to me, it's getting a little off track. So we, hopefully, Sonya said, we can let them talk, but we got to make sure we don't give them expectations where you think we can't meet. So other than that, I think it's still worthwhile. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think the last two years have been more productive, I guess. I don't know if in every other, every year is is necessary. Like I said, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of preparation and work for a little bit of community goodwill. I don't know if there's other ways that we could, we could interact up there better. I mean, it's three percent of our customer base and 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 it's a fair amount of energy. We don't do special meetings for other potential parts of our customer base. I mean, for me, when I was reading through the the audits and a bunch of the financial things here, ninety percent of our, ninety percent of our customers are residential. But fifty percent of our revenue is commercial. You know, we don't do a special meeting for our commercial people, you know, fifty percent of our water is commercial and ninety percent. So I mean, to go spend that amount of energy on that amount of thing is feels good, but I don't know if it's the the best thing to do for with our resources, especially. The table that I was at, you know, we were a, we were a river driven table. And so that lays well with where I I land on source protection and those types of things. So it was, it was good to be able to share some of the things that we're doing up there with some of the people, but I don't know. I think that we should definitely have a conversation at some point in the future before we start planning next years. Whether it's needs to happen on an annual basis, maybe semi annually. Might be a a way to go with it and then figure out some so other sort of outreach to do on the off years. Whether it's just a picnic at Lloyd at, you know, at the at the park up there or something like that, that might be more community based and less formal, might be a way to go with it. So that would be something that I would like to have a discussion at further than that. As far as other wrap ups, I don't have anything else to say. There is one thing, though, that Deborah did want to give some acknowledgements about all of the hard work that staff had put forth on the River meeting.
Thank you. And I did want to let you know too that we do take care of our general, we do take care of our major customers. We do a lunch every year.
Yeah.
It's not quite the upriver production, but not entirely forgotten. But I did want to take a moment to thank staff. A tremendous amount of work did go into that, to your point, Commissioner Carlson. And it really takes a village to pull something off. Because we all want to go home tonight. I'm not going to name everyone. About forty names here, and it was commissioners, business continuity, communications and marketing, customer service, electric operations, energy, finance, generation, the GM office, security, vegetation management, water operations. Those were the folks who hosted the tables, hosted the open house tables, provided the security and did all the pre meeting, planning and preparation, as well as the event setup and tear down. And I just really wanted to appreciate their work on that.
Excellent. All right. With that said, future board agendas, anything you want to, anybody want to talk about?
I just pointed out that we're already over time for July, and so and we're an hour short on August. And so when you guys do your agenda planning, just suggesting if you want to maybe smooth it out a little bit, we we got an hour available in August and we're over time in July. So just to kind of keep the pressure, you may want to think about that. If there's something you could move around, it's not time sensitive.
All right, I will bring that up with when we do our agenda planning. See if there's anything we can do. Anything else for the good of the order? That were adjourned.